Okay, if everyone can turn on your cameras. We are ready to begin. Happy two thirty-two. Good afternoon and welcome to the thirty PM session of the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. I would like to ask clerk, please call roll.
Mayor, councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Here.
Clerk?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Mayor Brunner?
Present.
You.
Our first item on the agenda is a Parking for Hope presentation. And I'd like to invite Heather Perez, Program Director of Hope Services, to turn on the camera. Oh, great, there you are. And there's, hi, everybody. So, thank you for joining us. For being here today. So I have a little something I'd like to read. And then I'll give you an opportunity to say anything you'd like to say.
Very well.
So, Hope Services, as you know, is a valuable Santa Cruz nonprofit that provides training and support services to adults with developmental disabilities. Their crews have helped to keep our downtown sidewalks and streets clean and welcoming for twenty-three years now. Each holiday season, our Parking for Hope program, in partnership with the Downtown Association, donates all of the funds collected from our downtown parking meters over eight days in December. Hope Services. This is in support of and appreciation for all that they do. Today we have with us Hope Services, Hope Services Director Heather Perez, Hope Services Employment Coordinator David Corante, and the Downtown Crew Members Mark Eric Rembor, Sarah Reed, Sandra Schofield, and Anthony Van Timm. Did I forget anyone?
Sounds like you got everybody, Sonia, thank you.
Great. I'm pleased to virtually present you all with the check from our eighth annual Parking for Hope program in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. Fifteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. This brings the total amount collected for Hope Services over eight years is two hundred eighteen thousand dollars. We're so grateful for your important work and hope that this donation will help it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, um, I would just like to say, um, I'm Heather Perez. I'm the Program Manager, uh, from Hope for Hope Services. And I just want to say, we Hope Services want to thank, uh, the C P, um, school, and the Santa Cruz for the Parking for Hope fundraiser. Um, it keeps five of our participants, um, working in their community. Um, and this contribution helps, um, our program running and employs our participants, um, to continue to, um, our speed beautiful. And, um, you know, it, it means a lot to them, um, part of their community and working in their community. So, thank you so much.
You, Heather. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'll see you downtown.
Okay, let's do that. That's been Mark, Sonia, thank you, everybody, truly appreciate it.
Hello.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Great. Bye. Bye. I will now move on to our next item. This is also a presentation. The presentation from Santa Cruz Mountains Trail Scholarship volunteers. And I'd like to invite Emma Usat, the Trails Program Manager, and Santa Cruz Mountains Trail Scholarship. Emma here with us?
Her on call.
She's not here with us yet? Or Emma in need, no. Okay, I don't see Emma either. We can come back to this item if need be. Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna send her a quick.
Great, thank you so much. I will, um, move on to announcements then. And, um, then we will move on to the regular meeting. So today's meeting is being broadcast live on Community Television Channel Twenty-five and streaming on the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com. If you wish to comment on an item on the agenda today, you can call in in the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on using the instructions on your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen with your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it's your time for public comment, please raise your hand either by dialing star nine on your phone or selecting the raise hand feature in the webinar controls on your. Please note that public comment is heard only on council items that council is taking action on and not regular updates. The items that will be open for public comment during today's meeting are numbers eight through fourteen on our agenda. I'd like to ask councilmembers if there are any statements of disqualification today. None? I'd like to ask the clerk to announce any additions and deletions.
There are none.
I'd like to now call on the City Attorney Tony Candati to provide a report on our closed session.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Brunner, members of the City Council. Uh, the City Council met via Zoom this afternoon in closed session to, uh, discuss the following items. Item one was a conference with legal counsel regarding liability claims, specifically the claim of Andrew John Hanson. Uh, the council received a report from the City Attorney's Office and the Risk Management Department. Uh, and by unanimous vote, council approved a settlement of that liability claim in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and forty-two cents. Item two was a conference with legal counsel involving existing litigation. Council received a report from the City Attorney's Office on the case entitled Don't Morph the Wharf. The City of Santa Cruz, um, council, uh, received a report from the City Attorney's Office on that item as well as on item three, which was a conference with legal counsel involving a significant exposure to litigation. Uh, other than the liability claim, there was no reportable act.
Thank you. The City Council will now review the meeting calendar attached, the agenda, and revise it as necessary, and I'll call on the city clerk to provide any updates to the calendar.
There are no.
This is now the time for councilmembers to report out on actions at external boards, committees, and joint powers authority meetings. For future meetings, come prepared to provide an update on any meetings or actions that occurred since the last council meeting so that the council and public can be informed. And I will call on Councilmember Myers.
Mayor, uh, yeah, I just have one, um, uh, I'm gonna let, uh, Calentari Johnson. No, we haven't had a. Be that class, I don't believe. Um, but I will, I've given update on Central Coast Energy. Uh, there are additional cities that have joined. City of, um, Bolthing has recently joined, um, and the, yeah, uh, also. Um, the board is in the middle, the last, our last meeting was last week. Board, um, received a, basically a recommendation by the staff cut back the roles and responsibilities of the advisory, which was a foundational part of the agency when it was formed in terms of how uh, input from the communities that are members of. That, uh, was not well received by the board and there was a vote. And, um, there has been an ad hoc committee set up review, view that those proposals by the staff also overlooked bylaws of the advisory committee. There was about ninety people that showed up all over from all the membership counties and cities and, um, about a two and a half hour session and it ended in the right place without moving forward to staff's recommendations, changes in bylaws and, um, some of the duties and responsibilities. Um, that was, uh, one of the more, um, longer or, or longer discussions we had. The, the agency as a whole is becoming, um, much more focused on sort of ability aspects of the, of the agency. And there's a lot of discussion around using the workforce development and the climate change goals and some of the other things that people, um, I mean, community members feel really were why they raised this form of having a community energy agency. So I think there's gonna be quite a bit of work done in the next. Um, and I expressed our need and our interest in workforce development, uh, local jobs, and me climate change, creating jobs as a priority. Think a lot about that. Tune in or get ahold of me if you're interested. But there's a, a very, very active public place, changing a little bit away from what, what benefits. Um, so there's a, there will be a strategic planning session, annual member, but, uh, I would imagine over the next, uh, two quarters. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Brown?
Uh, I'll, uh, a quick report as the primary i- item of interest on at least the, one of the missions I am on the Regional Transportation Commission was discussed at our last meeting. And, uh, I think we'll have a, more of a sense now of what that conversation is at the mission and then how that fits with the wider community conversation about the rail right of way. Uh, but we did have a transportation policy workshop that gave an opportunity for our staff there to, and also, uh, the staff from the different, from the county and the cities of Watsonville and Santa Cruz, so, and was there, uh, to give us an update on the segments of the rail trail planning that are happening, uh, further than south of us. So, um, the segment eight, twelve, oh, twelve. Um, and it was really interesting, the, um, I, I was looking to see if the slides are up on our website and I can't find them, but they are, they should be, and if they're not, they will be soon. Um, it had, it provided all, um, really visual representations of the kind of engineering work that, um, is possible and, and likely necessary to continue with the buildout of the rail trail. And, um, the presentation was intended to give us a sense of the overall, what that looked like for the full buildout, but also to talk about potential for an, um, phase rail-only portion, some of the more problematic areas in killer, um, related to the, the Tressel, Capitola Tressel and, uh, further south, which we talked about. So, um, it was, it was great. It was, it was really interesting. We had a good conversation. And that information, that should be available if you want to see what, um, you know, the renderings of what it, um, kind of the structurally what, what it might look like. And it really helped me understand the, the opportunities. Um, so that was, uh, our T P. And then the AAA, the Area Aging, we had ongoing conversation about, uh, countywide effort develop a master plan for aging playbook. And, uh, more on that from, uh, related to what the city's role, um, currently is and, and could be moving forward. Um, I think I will stop my report. Um, I'll let, uh, one of my colleagues from the Revenue Committee report on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Uh, Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to pick up where Councilmember Brown was, um, touching on the RTC. I serve as an alternate from the Metro Board. And the presentation, um, was really wonderful and detailed and thorough, and it is up on the website. Um, it's, uh, it's, well, it's really long, the URL, but if you go into the the two to twenty-two presentation link, it's up there. Um, so I, I don't have a lot to report because a lot of my committees and, and commissions have not met since our last meeting. Uh, I will say that the Metro Board, as, as Councilmember Myers, um, stated, is meeting on Friday. And we are also then spending the afternoon doing CEO interviews. So, um, some leadership changes there. So we'll have something to report, hopefully, the next time we come together. And then I have met with members of the Youth Action Network. And we are, um, discussing identification of a youth liaison. We adopted that last, uh, winter, have a youth liaison from the Youth Action Network, um, connected to us and helped. All the other committees will be meeting in the next.
Thank you. Councilmember Calder?
So, um, we did have a Public Safety Committee meeting. And, um, that was, I think, pretty much right after our last meeting, if I remember correctly. And we kind of set monthly meeting dates, priorities. We got an interesting update in regards to fires that I, I found particularly interesting. It was, um, just kind of from Chief Hayud, or, um, Chief Odie. And it was from, you know, two thousand seventeen, there was sixty-three fires. And then in two thousand twenty, it was up to one hundred and forty-one. And then in twenty-one, it was down to one thirty-four. And so it was interesting, uh, that they were all human causes. And, uh, with the last year, there was, I believe, twenty-five arrests and six convictions. And there was an update about the NFPA, um, Firewise Community Groups, and we had a criminal justice report. Um, and maybe my colleagues can fill in anything else that was notable that I left out. We, um, did not have a city schools meeting, although we had it on the calendar. Um, but we did get together, uh, um, internally. So we haven't met with the, with the superintendent or the school board members, but we talked a little bit about, um, allocation of children's fund and, um, priorities in regards to scholarships. And also providing personnel to help with after-school recreation at the elementary school sites um, to complement the programs that are already existing. We talked a little bit about the fencing that's happening at the Santa Cruz East Schools campuses and ways that we can obsee funding to open the campuses either on weekends or other times when school's not in session for the, to, to enjoy those recreation spaces. And in addition, um, the ad hoc elections that the committee met, and I believe there'll be more information about that later, so I'll leave it there. But feel free to fill in anything I provided about public safety or city schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Cummings?
Mayor, so, um, LACCO, uh, one of the action items, Open Cliffs Recreation District. Um, we had an item that was initiated by the Open Cliffs Recreation District back in August, requesting dissolution and incorporation of CSA eleven Parks and Recreation District. Um, within this annexation, there's a number of parcels that are in Capitola. And these areas will be excluded, parks and services being provided by the uh, for those areas. Um, Ambag, we had two reports, one was on the A- Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And then the Rural Regional Energy Network Presentation. For the Public Safety Committee, just kind of fill in a couple gaps. Um, uh, Councilmembers Watkins is the chair, will remain chair with Councilmember Calder as the vice chair. Um, and then just a, a little bit of a follow-up. Did outline a number of different items, um, that we will be, that we will have in a six-month work plan. So kind of in addition to, um, setting regular meetings, uh, we did also a number of items, uh, forward to going to a work plan. And this can all be found on the, uh, city's Public Safety Committee website. Um, and we did go over the report that came out of the Criminal Justice Council, uh, related to police policies originally, uh, that, that's on use of force, accountability, uh, technology. And, um, while we didn't take any action, uh, at that meeting, I would, uh, recommend other councilmembers have a review of that report already to maybe do so, and if there's any policy changes that we might want to align with, um, that we have, that were not in alignment with, uh, other regions of the county that we may want to take a look at and consider those policies as well. Um, although I know that a lot of the question kind of built off some of the changes that we had made here in Santa Cruz during twenty-twenty. So that concludes, um, a page on general business.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Brown, did you have any additions?
I did have one other thing that I completely forgot, if it's okay, that does jump in here.
Yes, go ahead.
I think it'll be, um, it, it's useful and, and interesting also for the public, the listening public. Um, I forgot, uh, that I did attend the Monterey Bay Air Resources Board Meeting. I've returned to that board, uh, after some time off. And, uh, we had a good meeting, uh, but the one item I wanted to highlight was the, uh, EMBARD Electric Bicycle Incentive Program, which, uh, was launched last fall. And, um, is, and this provides incentive to low-income applicants in Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Bonito Counties in the EMBARD region to purchase electric bicycles. And, um, it has been underutilized, the, the program. It did make some changes, eligibility requirements, who make it a little bit easier for, to expand the pool of applicants. So if you are, um, interested, anyone out there who's interested, it's, you know, it's a great program. And we also were, uh, advised at that meeting that this incentive program can be stacked with recent, uh, e-bike incentive program. So it can be a significant, uh, portion of the cost towards an e-bike. And people can go to the EMBARD website to find out more information, um, at embard.org. From there, you can scroll down and find Electric Bicycle Incentive Program link uh, for more information on how, on the eligibility guidelines and.
Thank you. Great. Uh, okay, Vice Mayor Watkins?
Uh, yeah, no, I think, let me just see if I have anything really to add. All of my colleagues have really touched on a lot of our mutual committees. Um, the only thing I, I guess I could add is that you'll all in our committee will be presented by the Revenue Committee with some, um, proposals moving forward in the next couple of meetings or the next meetings. So that will be forthcoming. And then in regards to our Charter Amendment Committee, that is an item that's off for us this afternoon. Um, lastly, just that the two-by-two continues to need to really think about how we can align our, our resources and leverage our, uh, various, uh, resources so that we can work toward solutions to homelessness and really trying to get into some of those, um, just nitty-gritty around what's working and what could be improved. And then, yeah, just in terms of forthcoming, we do have a Public Safety meeting coming right up as well as our community programs. So, much more to add other than that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watkins. Um, I'll just add a couple of, um, items. Our Health and All Policies Committee meeting met for the first time. And, uh, kind of outlined the, the year with some topics from the direction that was given last year by council. And, um, using the Public Safety Committee, um, um, as, uh, a, a committee to kind of explore some of the Health and All Policies items, um, looking at data reports and metrics. And, um, looking forward to, uh, exploring GEAR and, um, needing to research and, and find more information about that. Um, and researching and recruitment and compensation of, um, BIPOC folks and committees and commissions. Um, uh, I think also around looking at issues and items around harassment, um, discrimination and respectful workplace conduct, the workforce and demographics data. And reviewing the arts missions, um, initial recommendations made for later on in the year, a DEI statement from the and, um, kind of reviewing an annual progress report. Um, so just kind of a rough outline for that committee. And if, uh, let's see, Councilmember Calentari Johnson, if I left any, you know? Um, also the two-by-two committee meeting met. And, um, we had, um, items that we discussed for shelter capacity, navigation center, the armory, home key updates, and, um, housing and program capacity, um, inside and outside of this uh, discussions related to the one fourteen million dollar funds that we will be receiving uh, towards homelessness and, and, um, also some recent grants that the Santa Cruz County has received. Um, one of them related to the rehousing wave services. And I think that was a million dollars. And, you know, the rehousing wave is, uh, an effort to support guests. And, um, there were, uh, housing vouchers made available, um, through the Housing Authority of the, the County of Santa Cruz, um, to. to support this effort and, uh, for the update was that there were fifty-one units leased with available vouchers. And two-hundred-twenty-four additional households have been approved for vouchers and are searching for housing. And so more property owner involvement and support is needed. Um, there was encampment response discussions, outreach model and organizing outreach and homeward bound flexible funding, um, discussed and, um, the art. We are putting together our city, um, is putting together a homelessness response plan. And so, uh, we talked about that and I know that the city and county staff have been meeting as well to coordinate and leverage resource, the county side on services and the city side. So that should be coming up next month in our March meeting. And, um, our visit Santa Cruz, um, I did, uh, attend the retirement um, acknowledgement for Maggie Ivy, the former CEO, who is now retired and on behalf of this of Santa Cruz, I presented a certificate of recreation, um, to her and all her efforts in tourism for the county and the city of Santa Cruz. And, um, um, just a reminder that last year Mayor Myers did present a mayor proclamation to the city, um, her as well. So, um, that's probably all that I have. Does anybody have anything else? Wonderful. Well, I did see Emma Usak arrive and so I will go back to item number five, Santa Cruz Mountains Trail Stewardship Volunteers. Welcome, Emma. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I have a really quick presentation.
Wonderful.
Share. Um, let's see. Oops, not that share, other share. And, uh, feel free to interrupt me throughout, ask questions. That is quick, short and sweet. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here. Cool. So this is a little snippet from Santa Cruz Mountains Trail Stewardship, S C M T S's annual report. We have a much longer report if you want me to share, but I tried to focus on just City of Santa Cruz part. So these were our stats here in terms of trail stewardship. And just a reminder for anyone listening who doesn't know, we are the local five oh one C three nonprofit trail stewardship organization. So we're a nonprofit that builds, maintains a lot of different trails in the county with different land agencies, including City of Santa Cruz. Anyway, uh, last year, uh, we were really excited because we got to work in a lot of new places. But one of the staff that I want to call out here is that we had eighty percent first-time volunteers last year out of four hundred and sixty-seven unique volunteers, and I thought that was really cool. Um, as a lot of folks know, since our rebrand last year, we were branded from Mountain Bikers of Santa Cruz to Santa Cruz Mountains Trail Stewardship. And because of that, we've seen a really big increase in our trail user demographic, which is really exciting and a huge goal of ours. So it's starting to even out a bit more at our events in terms of, um, what types of trail users are getting involved in trail stewardship, which is what we're hoping for. Um, for a quick project rundown, one of the big projects we partnered with the City of Santa Cruz on last year was the West Side Pump Track. I just went past it today and every single time I would go past it, it's just packed with kids, families and all different types of, uh, pump track users, which is really cool. Um, it was so great to partner with the city on this and, um, you know, to make a sustainable pump track before it was kind of just an eyesore, uh, because there's not water available onsite and, um, it was always all dry. And so now having it pave, um, having it be a more fun and usable track is always crowded, which is so great. We actually have a trail counter. If anyone wants to know how many people use it, probably find that. Actually, I already see, um, thirty-five thousand visits since uh, we built it in August of twenty twenty-one. Very cool. And, uh, one thing I'll just mention is that for anyone listening who doesn't know, we partnered with the City of Santa Cruz to redesign it, uh, reconstruct the pump track and we also raised a few million dollars, or not a few million, two-hundred thousand dollars to help build. Cool. Onto trail programs. That's what I mostly do. So we do a lot of public events. There's a big part of our mission is connecting the public to trail stewardship. Um, last year was really exciting because after, uh, over a year-long hiatus, we brought back our big flagship events called Dig Days. And Dig Days are these large trailwork events where we have about sixty people come out and we cap the events. They always sell out. And we, um, provide breakfast and lunch and a post-dig raffle and beverages, snacks. And, um, everyone comes out and does trailwork with us. Uh, we did a few in city parks. Uh, here's some pictures from an improvement we did through a dig day on University Connector Trail in Pogonip. Um, throughout the years, tackling some pretty big projects on the trails. A lot of them due to natural springs that are just near the trail or poor drainage. And so here's where we installed some rock into the trail. It required a lot of wheelbarrow load, um, bringing in the rock and then of course installing it properly so it'll last forever. Here are some photos from De La Viega where we rerouted a tiny bit of trail to avoid this, um, natural rutting that was occurring. You can see all the happy volunteers. I think that was our students' dig day on Martin Luther Jr. Day of Service. And then here's just an example from a dig day we did on Emma McBray Trail. And this is kind of also showing, um, what we send to our volunteer trail crew leaders who are helping lead events or lead volunteers at these events where, you know, we're showing them where to install a drain. The after photo. The big improvements all around. More examples, this is from University Connector Trail. Kind of the instructions we're sending about stone pitching. And something that we added this year, which is really helpful, is all of our events have, um, a map online now where we flag out what we're going to do and where we're going to do it with instructions. And we've seen that's been a huge improvement for our volunteers helping do all this work. So here's just a few of the awesome reviews we got from City Park, um, this year. We, so far, last year, we got three hundred and thirty participants to write back in our volunteer feedback form, which was really amazing because as you probably saw, we only had four hundred and fifty-seven unique volunteers. So a lot of people responded. And out of, um, five out of five ratings, we got a four point nine average. Pretty good. So we're doing something right. Um, the common themes I saw were that our staff and crew leaders are awesome, are that people love giving back to the community. Um, people really like meaningful work. The events were super organized. People enjoyed learning and they were fun. I did want to highlight, this is really important to me, that we still have work to do. So for me, the really valuable responses were the few that actually provided some feedback that on things we need to work on. The comments I saw were diversity, education and creating more efficiency. Um, we spend a lot of time giving instructions at the beginning and then also of course, poison it. So these are things we're going to be working on in twenty twenty-two. I realize I'm probably going to go over, so I'm going to try not to. We also worked with the city every year. We have for the last few years to the summary trail crew. Um, so Santa Cruz Mountains Trail Stewardship, uh, staff helped lead the program. City helped fund, um, the cruise staff, the cruise time, and then also part of our, uh, crew leader's staff time. So Katie is super badass. She's our trail stewardship coordinator. She led all of these students who had a really great time. Um, they got to work in so many different parks, Moore Creek, um, the Harvey West Pump Track, Emma McBray Trail, University Connector, um, all over the place. This is from Arana Gulch where they got to install fencing. And they had a great time. And then this is another program we introduced last year called Trail Stages and it's kind of, um, a graduate, a graduate program for our volunteer trail crew leaders. So these are actually volunteers that we trust so much. They're practically staff and they can lead volunteer events on their own. I mean, they've gone through a lot of training and it's been a huge success so far. They're actually leading two events a week right now on their own. And we've been teaching Trail Academy classes at every single dig day this year. So we taught twenty classes last year. Um, we had four hundred and twenty-two attendees and they also have a four point nine out of five average. One last thing I wanted to touch on was that we also made two different trail tips series. So trail etiquette was a big theme of last year and I think it's so and I hope it's the way we brought a lot of value for our partners. Um, this picture on the left is an example of one of the trail tip geared towards mountain bikers. Uh, that we got a lot of partners to share and have been spreading throughout the year. And then the one on the right is one of our pump track trail tip series. So we have two different series right now, one for multi-use trails and one for pump tracks, um, just with the goal of spreading awareness about trail etiquette. We saw a lot of new, um, recreationalists last year throughout the pandemic. And we are trying to encourage good trail etiquette whenever we can. I'll skip over these kind of boring guests. We're doing well in terms of, um, increasing our membership, our digital reach. And so through that, we're able to share more of the education that we're, that I was just talking about. Yeah, looking forward, um, this year, decided to increase stewardship through more adult trail partnerships with the City of Santa Cruz. Improved trail etiquette, more education trainings and updated signage. Um, we want to keep improving trails for all trail users. And also we really want to increase the diversity of our volunteers, participants, staff and board. Plus all the other programs that just went up. So that's it. And I'll leave my email in the comments and please feel free to send me a message if you have more questions or ask me questions right now.
So much. Emma, can you also verbally say the best way to connect, uh, with the stewardship program? Where would that be?
Yeah. So you can go to all of our, um, panels, our Santa, Santa Cruz Trails. So you can find us on social media through Santa Cruz Trails. Or our website is Santa Cruz Trails dot org or you can email me directly at Emma E M M A at Santa Cruz Trails dot org.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. It looks like we have, uh, council member Calder has a question.
Hi. Hi, not a question, just a comment. I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you do and I see you guys out there. I hike a few times a week and I really appreciate all the work that goes into maintaining our existing trails and, um, it's, it doesn't go unnoticed. Uh, you know, we, we, we really appreciate you. So thank you.
Hey, thanks so much. And I should really share, we have a link. We record all the work we do on Trail Forks. So if you want to read through that, I'll be sure to share that.
Thank you. Uh, council member Myers.
Yeah, Emma, I just wanted to say thank you also. Um, been watching you guys grow this organize, organization for a long time. Since I was on the Parks Commission and, you know, the trails in Santa Cruz really are, you know, just a testament for guys' great work and the fact that, you know, you're involving congratulations. Great to hear from you and everything that you guys are doing. Well, thanks for being part of the city and helping care of our, uh, base properties.
Hey, thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, council member Calentari Johnson.
Yes, I'll echo those sentiments. Thanks for the presentation and all the work and, um, the loved to death pump tracks on the west side are loved to death by my children. So thank you so much for that.
Awesome. Great. Yeah. And please feel free to also reach out if you have noticed anything on the trails, if you like to keep false on trails, you have advice or ideas, always open. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Emma. Thanks for joining us today. Bye.
Bye.
Okay. We will now continue on with our agenda. I, we are at the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, let's see, items eight through twelve. And, uh, I'll just quickly list. Item eight is the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Item nine is cyber security event monitoring and managed security service provider. Item ten is an award contract for on-call land surveying services, public work. Item eleven is Chestnut Street, street storm drain replacement and pavement rehabilitation. Also public work. And item twelve is the chat booster bypass upgrade project. Um, for members of the public who are streaming this meeting, now is the time to call in if you want to comment on items eight through twelve. Instructions are on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device, raise your hand by either dialing star nine on your phone or by selecting raise hand in the webinar controls on your computer. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. Are there any council members who wish to comment on or pull any items? Okay, seeing none. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak, now is the time to go. I will go out to the public and see if there are any hands raised, star nine, to raise your hand or raise hand in your webinar controls on your computer. Okay, I don't see any. I will come back to the council and, um, I'm now looking for a motion. Uh, Vice Mayor Watkins.
Yeah, I'm happy to move our consent agenda.
Great. And, um, council member Brown.
Second.
We have a first by Vice Mayor Watkins and a second by member Brown. And can the city clerk, a roll call vote?
Member Calentari Johnson.
Hi.
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 Brown.
Hi.
Myers.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Hi.
Hi. Consent agenda items passed unanimously. Okay. Moving on, next up on our agenda is item number thirteen, Board of Building and Fire Appeals Appointment. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you wish to comment on, now is the time to call in on this item using the instructions on your screen. We will begin with questions from council, if there are any, and we will take public comment and then turn to the council for nominations and voting to appoint someone to the board of fire. So I'd like to, uh, turn it over to our city clerk, Honey Bush.
I guess you could just send for a public comment and come back to see if anyone has it on.
Okay, let's go out to public comment. I don't see any hands raised. Okay. I will come back to council. And council member Cummings.
I have a question. I was just wondering, because I know for the other, when we have, um, mission appointment. mission appointments, oftentimes commissioners aren't invited to kind of speak to the council before we make decisions. I'm just wondering, have you, would have been reached to or was able to comment? Because uh like a, a lot of the applications, it kind of says, like, I've been working in buildings and construction for X amount of years. And so for a number of the applicants, it seems like similar applications have been submitted. So it's kind of difficult to get a sense of what differentiates the different candidates. I'm just wondering if anybody had been contacted or wanted to plan on being here this part of the meeting.
Do you mean applicants? Yeah, the majority of the applicants were actually part of the annual appointment process. If you remember, this was one group where pointed and then we withheld one of the appointments to get more qualified applicants. I do know that staff um was going to reach out to sort of um their recommendation. It, I don't know if they did that or not, but I know that there are um applicants that are
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so I will I will just go around to council member and ask for nominations. So I will start with council member Brown.
So based on the applications, um I uh I would nominate uh Scott, Scott Rogers. Scott Rogers.
Okay, council member Calentari Johnson?
I'd like to nominate Monica Ratliff.
Okay. Council member Cummings?
No additions.
Council member Calder?
No additions.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
No addition.
Council member Myers?
Uh, I would nominate uh Nielsen.
And my nomination is Christian Nielsen. Okay, so
Uh, so the um the three nominated candidates are Christian Nielsen, Monica Ratliff, Scott Rogers. Council member Calentari Johnson?
Monica Ratliff.
Sir?
I always feel so much pressure. I feel, I feel like everyone, thank you everyone for, for um wanting to serve. Um, um Monica Ratliff.
Scott Rogers.
Brown?
Scott Rogers.
Myers?
Uh, Christian Nielsen.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Monica Ratliff.
Brunner?
Christian Nielsen.
Monica Ratliff got three of the votes.
Wonderful. Thank you to all the applicants. And thank you to Monica Ratliff. That completes the appointment to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals with a term ending January first, thousand twenty-three. We will now move on to our agenda item. Next up on our agenda item is item number fourteen, resolution ordering on the ballot for the June seventh, thousand twenty, twenty-two primary election, a proposed charter amendment creates six districts and an at-large directly elected mayor. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be one, a presentation of the item by the council members who brought forward the item, followed by questions from the council. We will then take public comment and return to council for deliberation and action. So I'd like to now turn it over for presentation. And who would like to begin the presentation?
Mayor, I'll chime in. Actually, um Casey Hemard, who's with staff, importantly, for us on this item, that as members they have, you, you will present, she'll be presenting the
Thank you so much. I'd like to invite Casey Hemard to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Brunner. Can you all see my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Casey Hemard and I'm part of the team in the city manager's office who's helping with the city's transition to district elections. And I've been helping with this since November. I'm gonna start by giving you a little bit of background and telling you some of the work that the council ad hoc committee on election-related issues has been doing and give you uh some background on the proposal that the committee's bringing to you. So the council has actually been working on this issue for two years now. In May of twenty twenty, the council uh passed a res- resolution indicating um intention to transition to district elections by the November twenty twenty-two general municipal election. And then late last year in November, the council created an ad hoc committee for elections-related issues to look at a host of issues. The committee has met a couple of times uh this year. And um early on recognized that this transition to district elections is significant and historic. And the committee was very interested from the beginning in giving the, the voters an opportunity to voice what this change could look like. And whether it's a six district situation with an at-large directly elected mayor or where we would have seven districts as we are proceeding right now. The early analysis from experts did not ha- did not provide a clear legally permissible way for the city to transition to six districts with an at-large mayor in time for the November twenty twenty-two election. However, further research analysis did uh pave the way for, for a potential path. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what that looks like. If the city council opts to pursue this uh ballot measure, the first track is that the council would pass a resolution placing a charter amendment on the June ballot that would create six districts and an at-large directly elected mayor. The council would need to pass that resolution by March eleventh, nor refer to qualify for the June ballot. In the second track, the, the city would need to continue moving on the current process for the California Voting Rights Act. Um, where we would do broad, we're doing broad, broad public outreach, several public hearings on the maps. And then the council chooses a district map. The difference here would be that in addition to choosing a seven district map, the council would also choose a six district map. And so if the ballot measure passed, then the six district map would prevail. And if it did not pass, the seven district map would prevail. And that would go into effect for the November election. As the committee was looking at this, um you know, they, they seemed very interested in making sure that the voters have the choice of what this looked like. There was also the consideration of stewardship of resources, having one public outreach process as opposed to, say, multiple public outreach processes over multiple election cycles, if this was something that was hunted down the road. In terms of the substance of the charter amendment proposal, um in addition to creating six districts and an at-large directly elected mayor, makes a few other changes, including updating the rules on term limit, the duties of the mayor, how council vacancies are handled. And it creates a two-round election system, which, which would be like a runoff election, beginning with the twenty twenty-four election cycle. So that's all the background that I have for you all right now. I'm gonna now turn it over to the ad hoc committee members so that they can share their insight.
Thank you, Casey Hemard. I, I will turn it over to back to my screen there, um council member Myers and then Vice Mayor Watkins. And you're muted.
We've muted. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you um Casey for the uh presentation. And um I just, a couple of comments from my colleagues. Um, uh, you know, as we dug into this, um what we really realized was that, you know, we are on track, um the, the settlement agreement. Already have an extension on transitioning seven dist- Um, we looked at a lot of other cities and what they had done um as they were transitioning to elections. Um, have the good fortune of actually having a new city manager who has worked now and has worked in a city where districts are in place uh and receive um, you know, some good input from him as well as our, um, as well as our legal staff. I want to recognize Casey Bronson. She's been really working hard on this. I know she's on vacation this, but um our city attorney's office, very, very helpful as well as kind of made her way through this. Um, and we decided some of the things that were assigned to the ad hoc committee should continue, especially the range shows voting uh assessment and bringing that back as well as um the other, the other methods that some, some communities are testing. But at the end of, I think we've met three times, that they, really at the end of each meeting, we just kept coming back to the importance of, you know, bringing this to our voters as quickly as possible. Um, because as you get into district elections and this, you know, some of the things we've learned from other communities, uh it's very hard to take a district away from anyone um once, once they're in place, once they won't run for os- office. It's very hard to go backwards or change districts um once you've started down the road of, of seven, of seven districts. It's not to say that that isn't a viable and perfectly fine outcome for our community. But um we feel it's, this, at this point in time is a very important to ask and answer. Um, I will state for our community, just in case folks aren't, um haven't had a time to look at the, the actual charter amendment. Um, this does, really does not change the duties of our mayor. Um, and I, I can have Tony uh comment on this a little bit more. This continues to maintain of what this, the mayor has been charged with currently in this uh agenda, you know, agenda setting and agenda development. Does however, provide council members to also put uh an item on the agenda. So we very much wanted to keep in if the traditions that people are used to in terms of the mayor um and what the mayor does, its responsibilities. Um, it also maintains our city manager form of government, does not change our uh, our uh structure to a strong mayor as some people for that. Um, but uh, so those two things I think are very important for the voters and for uh our colleagues to understand that um this very much is in keeping with how the mayor has functioned in general. Uh, the big changes are, is that the term would be a four-year term for the mayor. Um, it would be at-large elected. Uh, and we've set a, a consecutive years uh process whereby been running uh city council, could serve as a council member for years, I excuse me, for two four-year terms. But then um they could also run for two four-year term mayor. And again, looking at similar cities, um both of population, but more importantly of issues, this consecutive leadership, training as a council member before becoming an elected mayor seems to be a very common comment across many cities. Um, it's not to say that someone, you know, couldn't be elected into mayor right, right out of the bat. That would be allowable as well, but um this idea of having those experience, that experience and really understanding how to, how to be an effective uh council member as well as, as well when you're during a mayor run, is something we thought should be captured. Um, other than that, I don't believe there's any um, many changes away from sort of the existing uh role of the mayor in terms of, like I said, setting the agenda, et cetera. Um, so I just wanted to point those out particularly. Um, uh appreciate the ability to dig into this and we hope supported by our colleagues, important, very, very important question to bring to the voters. That's really, the best way to get public input is, let's put it on the ballot for voters.
Thank you, council member Myers. Uh, Vice Mayor Watkins?
Uh, yeah, I just want to also thank council member Myers for further clarifying what's before our council and before the community in terms of what we're bringing forward. I too want to thank our staff for uh the meetings and just all of the various scenarios that we went through to land in this place. I think at times all of our heads might have been spinning in terms of just timelines and parallel tracks. And ultimately, we as a committee landed on wanting to use this unique opportunity, this unique sort of time in our city's history to really bring forward this option to our community to vote on. Um, anecdotally, I've heard, you know, interest in wanting to see this move forward. And regardless if this passes or not, the requirement for us to advance into a city that has uh districts is forthcoming, you know, no matter what. So we know that that provided this one sort of window for us to really dive in deeply to make sure that we did our due diligence to bring forward a really comprehensive option. And that's where we landed in terms of what's before you. Um, and it, it didn't go without a lot of serious consideration and thought. And ultimately, this recommendation really puts the decision before our voters to decide ultimately how they want to see the city move forward in regards to having a directly elected mayor in six districts as opposed to seven districts only. So um I appreciate you, council member Myers, for really further clarifying some of the nuances within the proposal in regards to the duties essentially remaining the same. Um, and ultimately having uh somebody who with that broader perspective of the city, but also being an adherent to the um, the, the litigation that's before us as well. So that's um, that's sort of all the comments I have and, and we're prepared and happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Council member Calder?
I also want to thank the staff and my colleagues for all of the work um that went into bringing this forward and um just acknowledging that we are moving to districts, whether it's six or seven. We hope that that will be for the public to decide. And the idea that came from members of this body and the community that it would be nice to have um somebody with kind of a global holistic view of the city would be an asset to this group. And so um I think we have plenty of time for public outreach. And what better way for the public to be involved than to, you know, have it hit the ballot and let people um really weigh in? So, yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, council member Calder. Uh, I would like to bring it out to uh council question at this time. Um, Calent, council member Calentari Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues and staff for your work on this. Um, I wonder if my Um, I wonder if my colleagues who worked on this or were staff could just, um. Share a little bit more about thoughts on public outreach and in particular, uh, outreach to, um. Communities who are harder to reach and are reaching a lot in our communities, if you can share the plan and the process about moving forward.
Council member Calentari Johnson, um, I think I'm probably in the best position to speak to that. And, uh, the council members can also add. Um, we've sort of been a holding pattern while we resolved this because it's already a little bit complicated. We certainly don't want to complicate it anymore, so we were waiting to have this resolved. Um, before that, before we realized this was an option, we launched, we began to launch our, our process on the seven district maps. And but didn't really fully implement that. Um, we have, we have surveys, we have interactive mapping tools for people to use to, to suggest alternatives. And we will do that with the six district maps as well. And but we also are very concerned about reaching out to our underserved communities. Um, we have, uh, been, we've connected with our, uh, city colleagues over at senior center to, to make sure we're reaching out to seniors. And then, um, Peter Bichier, our community liaison to the Spanish-speaking community. Has, uh, been working closely with me in, in terms of our outreach. We are going to, uh, be partnering and doing some in-person events. For com- for those who may not be able to have access to online resources that we have. And, um, for those who may not, uh, read or, so we're gonna go and do some in-person things. He has been connecting with Barrios Unidos and, uh, talked to, to some of the Mercy Housing locations, participate in some of their meetings. And, um, and, and some other venues like that. And I know you, uh, suggested some other opportunities and, and we're gonna, we're gonna exhaust those.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Council member Cumming.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to thank everyone for all the work on this, um, agenda item. Now, um. To keep some of my questions short for now, um, I have comments I'd like to make later. But I do want, uh, reference, you know, the. Motion that, um, led to the establishment of this committee. And a couple pieces there were turning with the process and the timeline for the engagement. Uh, consider re-establishing the charter amendment committee. And then I do know that there were other options brought up that mentioned earlier about ranked choice voting. So, um, I'm just curious of those, the parts of this, of what would the, of the direction that was provided. Uh, because the general report really only focuses on the, uh, six districts at-large mayor. It doesn't really address some of the other direction that was provided. So I don't know if that's staff or if some of the subcommittee wanted to speak to that, but, um, wanting to know, um. Where those other pieces are at and, um, you know, why we're not doing all these right now.
Casey, you want to do that or our team, yeah, here we go. I'm, I'm happy to, if, if it's, you know, if it is helpful, I, I guess what I'll say is we did, we did have those types. We had a depth conversation around all of the different considerations. And ultimately landed on this is the best path right now, moving forward. Um, you know, and so, you know, there are so many avenues, there's no one way to do this, right? I think is ultimately where we kind of understood this all to be, right? When you start to sort of blend all the different options and how different configurations of city government can work, they look really different. And so, within our discussions, we talked about ranked choice voting, ultimately decided not to pursue that as a recommendation at this time, given the. Really the shift before us being quite substantial in regards to our city. Um, not to say that that couldn't be forthcoming at a future time. Um, as well as some of the other points of discussion that were brought up in terms of the original direction. Uh, so I mean, I guess in summary, that's sort of how I would respond to that question. It wasn't that it didn't go undiscussed, it just meant that this is where we ultimately landed in the recommendation we wanted to bring forward to you all. And I welcome Casey or others who want to. And I want to also say super special shout out to Casey for her hard work and for Cassie, they did a really great job, thank you.
You want to respond, uh, as well, Casey Hemar?
Sure, absolutely, um, I, I just would, um, that, you know, um, this is, this is the committee's decision on, um. Where they want to go as a, as a matter of policy and, and we're trying to facilitate the direction that, that they're giving to us. My understanding is that ranked choice voting is not necessarily off the table. That, that, that there was a time sensitivity around this one particular point. And, um, so that there was an urgency to moving this to the council to make a decision on whether, um, the council would like to act on this. Uh, because there's a limitation by March 11th. Um, but, you know, we, if, if the committee would like to continue to move forward on that, we are prepared to do so on ranked choice voting and the other questions. Uh, we are, we, the staff stand ready to do that.
Um, I, I had a quick question and then I'll go to council member Brown. Um, you brought up.
Uh, can you come back to me maybe because I wasn't done asking?
Oh, yes, sorry, I apologize, let's go back to council member Cumming.
If you, if you have your question, you can go ahead and ask.
I don't want to digress, so we'll stick with you finishing out your question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Thank you, uh, the next question I have for the city attorney, just to get some clarification on the resolution going to be adopted and so. Maybe it'd be helpful for the public, but, um, this is the first time this resolution is coming before us. And I'm just curious if what gets adopted in terms of exhibit A. If that would be the language that would move forward in terms of how. The city would conduct, um, kind of direct left mayor process. So the idea is that, and, and I guess my concern is that, you know, no one's really, doesn't really have to the public. And I think it has been expressed that there's been some rush around this and so my, one of my big that, um, you know. Terms of the roles, for example, the presiding of the mayor. Um, and issue around terms and limits that some members of the community may have other thought on. What the roles of the mayor should be, could we stick with a, um, city manager form of government? And so, you know, when people think about, um. What we're going to be moving toward in terms of the direct left mayor. Would this resolution kind of be something that the city council be moving forward and now kind of modify it? That would be the option that they have when they're voting on what will be moving forward in terms of a direct left.
So there's a lot to unpack there, but let me, let me see if I can. Narrow down the, the focus a bit. So what you have before you is a resolution that would, if approved, go on the ballot for the June election. There's a timing issue here in that. The election in June is on June 7th. The county elections official has 30 days to certify the results of the election, which is on July 7th. In order to comply with statute, county elections official has to have. The district maps by July 6th. There's a chance, not a great chance, but there is a chance. That the resolution could be placed on the ballot, an election could occur, the measure could. Pass, but the election might, you know, there's a remote chance that the election won't be certified by July 7th. And when we bring forward an ordinance. Uh, for the council's consideration, uh, for adopting district maps, we have to deal with that uncertainty. So what would be brought forward is a resol- or an ordinance adopting a six district map and a seven district map. In the alternative, if it's clear after June 7th that the measure fails. Then the seven district map would go to voters in November. If the results are known in advance or before the 7th of July and. Measure passes, then a six district map would go before the voters. And so that is the process that, uh, would be followed. And the language that's in front of you in the resolution would amend the city charter to specify. Elections by district, uh, for six council members, at-large election for the mayor. Slightly change the wording of the mayor's duties, but not in a real substantive way. And also it would require, uh, after the November 2022 election. That both council member and mayoral offices would be subject to a primary or first round election. In the primary prior to each city council election in November. Whereby if a single candidate garners a simple majority of the vote. That candidate would be elected, uh, either in March or June of the election year. Uh, and if no candidate, uh, garners a simple majority. Then the top two vote getters would be in a runoff election at the November, uh, election. That's the process that is currently utilized for district elections, uh, for board of supervisors. And so we would be basically on a similar pattern as, uh, the board of supervisors. I think I, that responds to your question, but if there's something I missed, remind me.
I think that more or less got to it, so pretty much the language that would be adopted in this resolution. Would be the lang- would be what the city, what the community members will be voting on. Should we move in that direction with an at-large mayor, these would be the roles and.
That's right.
Responsibilities and outside of approving that language today. I mean, since this is the first time it's coming publicly, there'd be no other opportunity publicly. Unless we extended it.
On the placement of the measure before the voters, if the council takes action today. Sort of putting another item on the agenda to rescind that action or modify that action at the March 8th meeting, those would be the last opportunities. Because the, the calling of the election has to occur for the June ballot by March 11th, the Friday after your next council meeting.
Um, and then, um, one other question I had. Cause there's been a lot brought up around, you know. Moving to seven districts and then having to move back six districts and a direct left mayor. And one item in the agenda report came up, uh, says if the election results are not certain as of July 6th, city will proceed with seven districts. The November 8th, 2022 election, an implementation of the transition to six districts with an at-large mayor. Do not be implemented until the 2024 election cycle. And so I guess my question is, it, you know, this language indicates that there would be some mechanism for shifting. From the sixth dis- from seven district back to a sixth district, um. Um, voter map after, um, after the 2022 election. And so I'm just kind of trying to understand, you know, why we can't take the time then to get more community input. If it seems like there is the possibility that we will go, go to seven districts and transition back to. At a later one time to direct.
I think the timing concern is, uh, dictated by the election's calendar that's provided for under state law for placing matters on the. On the ballot, so that's, that's just the reality that we have to deal with. And the scenario that you described is in the very unlikely scenario or situation in which. Um, the process takes the full 30 days and in the last, uh, few days before the certification. It's neck and neck and we don't know for certain, uh, whether or not the measure is going to pass. Uh, and in that very unlikely situation. Um. Then there's a remote possibility that there would be a seven district election in November. Followed by a redistricting and at-large mayor with six districts in 2024.
Then, um, two last questions, one is around, I've talked to some people and they're interested in understanding what costs are to the city. Cause it sounds like, you know, there will be the need to, we've been on this track of creating seven district maps. Now there's going to be the need to create six district maps. Obviously, you know, we've entered into a contract with specified number of maps that we're going to create, now we have to amend that. Um, those costs are going to go up and so we've been asking what those costs, um, would be.
There is an, an additional expense associated with the preparation of the six district maps, but I don't have that figure, I don't know, Casey.
Actually, um, the demographer, um, is prepared to give us six district, three six district maps as part of the contract with no addition.
Obviously, if there's a two-stage election process, then that will be additional costs for placing the matter on the, on the primary ballot.
Great, and then I guess my last question is, um. So are we in, if, if this moves forward, are we anticipating this year that we wouldn't have a runoff for 2022 election? That they, we would have, if, if this were to pass and, and there's not enough time in, in, in November. Would we then have to have, you know, some kind of special form of election where they don't have a runoff? And we just have that one election before the council members and the mayor.
No. No, the, they proposed charter amendment would specify that for the 2022 election year only. The candidate that receives the highest number of votes would, uh, would be elected. Uh, and then the two-round elections would start in 2024.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your questions, council member Cummings?
I have more, but in the sake of time and knowing there's other people with questions, I'm just gonna hold the rest of the question. So, but those are the, some of the main ones I wanted to, um, get some information on, thank you.
Um, okay, council member Brown. Thank you for waiting.
No problem, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I actually, uh, quite a few of my questions have been asked and. Answered, I think, um, I'm still, as I think through how this is gonna go, I feel entirely clear, but. Um, thank you for, uh, for those. I have a couple of other questions related to the content of the resolution. Uh, the first one is in the, in part one, this is, um, in section one. The three, so it's the, it's not page numbers, the page numbers, but it's like the top of six. Um, the document attached to our agenda. This is, there is a consideration for, um, around eligibility for reelection. So as for the public. Probably without any information, not, not entirely sure what's happening here. But the, you know, r- right now, the council, uh, i- individual council members can run for two consecutive terms and then must take, uh, two-year period. Before the possibility of running again. And, um, there are suggested changes in the section. Uh, and in section B in particular, uh, and these changes would allow for six. The four terms consecutive in various considerations against the general public. Um, and I understand the rationale for, uh, number the B and then, um, two. Um. And I, what I not, so that would, if you're, if you're on the council and then you want to run for mayor, don't have to wait. One is on the council and wants to run, doesn't have to wait for the two-year hiatus. And or the other way, so if you're ma- if one is mayor and wants to run in a district following mayor, that could happen immediately. But part three is, um, says a, a council member, um, not be prompted from running for a different council. In the event the council member moved. Um. And I am, I'm, I'm not, I'm, that is a piece that I, I just don't understand the logic there. Um, why it, in the unlikely event, using that terminology, in the unlikely event that somebody is so enamored of. Uh, of being a council member, that they wanted to continue and. Uh being a council member, but they wanted to continue and not take that break, that they could then move and represent a different district. So I, I guess I, I'm, I'd like to understand why, what the rationale was, the committee, I suppose. On wh- why you included that. Um, cause it, it doesn't, it's kind of counterintuitive if the idea is to have. Better representation of somebody in your neighborhood um that. Or somebody, if they wanted to continue to represent. Council member, they'd have to go represent another neighbor. Um so just, if I could. If I could hear more about that, it would be helpful. I have one other question that, but I'll, I'll ask that.
I think that probably is a question for the committee. Um there was. A lot of discussion about how we wanted to deal with. Potential term limits for council members. Uh the, the initial question was. Should it, a council member elected by district? Uh be able to run for mayor position after two terms and the committee was. And I think, I think it was unanimously in support of that based on. You know, having experience as a council member before running for, for mayor. The. The concept of serving out two terms in one district and moving to another, I think it was just reflected the committee's view that. Um in the event a council member moves to a different district, that they would have the opportunity to continue to serve. But um but that is a policy question for the council. And so that could be changed if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to hear the rationale. The other is, makes sense to me, being able to run for. If, if we go down this road, that'll make sense. There's a rationale in terms of, you know, gover- you know governmental institutions and representation that. Makes sense to me there, but the kind of building in. Again, the unlikely potential for uh carpet bagging and, you know, across the city just seems. It, I don't, I, I, I don't see the rationale. So I just like to understand that and or ask my colleagues if. The, considering that.
Is there any um, any council member on the committee that would like to respond to that?
I'll let Martine, I could, Martine, if you wanna chime in and. Yeah, I um, I, he's uh. Tony, I interpreted that as being some consideration for legal purposes, but. I could be wrong. I don't necessarily recall adding that component other, and I know. Cass- or Casey, or Cassie is here right now, but in terms of some of the considerations that if. For example, someone needed to move, that would be an unlikely scenario, but it could be accommodated. So I, I, I felt like that was more of a legal terminology as opposed to a committee recommendation and policy, but I asked my colleagues if I.
Council member Golda. I was gonna say the same thing, like the way I interpreted is that not everyone's gonna live in their neighborhood necessarily for the. Rest of their life and it's providing flexibility for people. I- in, in particular, like people that aren't homeowners necessarily, that if they need to move or want to move and they could. Represent the new neighborhood that they live in or um. That was how I interpreted it, but um but.
And the question.
Say something, council.
I, I mean, I, I don't, I, I, I don't wanna be difficult here. It just, just seems counterintuitive that we would give. Central candidates or elected um an opportunity to. Serve sixteen years straight by moving. I understand accommodating will move, but if you move, then you can represent that just the next one that. Um so I guess I, whereas. Don't move, wait, you have to wait. Uh a- again, it's just, I, I don't, I understand what you guys are getting at, but I don't think. A remedy for that, remedy for um. Renters or maybe displaced through, you know, choice or not choice. Um be able to continue to serve is a different question than being able to serve a third and fourth.
So I, I don't, I'm, I really don't. Just to clarify, we did not view this as a legal requirement. Um. It really is a policy decision for the, for the council. And so. Uh council members Watkins and, and Goldar expressed. What I took to be the sentiment of the ad hoc committee when we discussed this, this provision.
Understood, but again, I'm just, so I'm asking my colleagues a question. Is that your intention? To allow for six, for four consecutive terms only if.
No, that wasn't our intention.
Wasn't mine.
Written though, so I guess I. That I think would like to, uh, resolve before we, you know, put this on the ballot.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean difficult, it's just.
No, 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 I, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I would like to point out that. That would be some tricky timing for a council member to serve. Two full terms and then step into a position because essentially if you. Relocated out of your district, that would be tantamount to abandoning the office. And so at that point, the office would be vacant. You could do that in June of an election year in time to get your. Name on the ballot for November, but the office would be vacant in the meantime. So it's kind of tricky. Uh how that would play out.
Again, just wondering the rationale and given that it's. Why?
I was, I, I might just add that Tony just brought up, but I was understanding was that. Kind of the carpet baggers uh idea I think would be hard to, for someone to do um. But that, the intent, I understood the intent actually as it is written, which is that um. That. Most, in most, most likely, if someone was moving or they were forced to move um. And we were trying to, we were trying to give that person the opportunity. To make sure that if they did have to move into another district, they still be serving twofold. And so the intent is to try to protect people who may not be homeowners. Um but that. Someone who was in a seat. Uh would, would really, it would be kind of unlikely that they would, you know. Vacate that seat with the intention of sort of trying to. Double dip in a way that's different than a council member who's staying in the, right? I mean, the, the, you know, the beginning of the sentence says. You know, our, our existing charter says that as a, as an existing council member, you can serve two, two terms consecutive. And then you have to take two years off. And so I think part of the idea was that um, you know, someone who was forced to move, that wasn't a homeowner, wasn't somehow penalized or lost. Or is losing the opportunity to do those.
I appreciate that. I, and I, I, I really, and you, given the comments I've made throughout this process, I imagine. You know, I, I do really appreciate that. I guess I'm just, what confused me is that it, the way it's written is. Um within the exceptions that would allow someone. In that. Way it's writ. Here that that is what. And, and it is. So again, I'm, this is the kind of thing where I feel like. Essentially partly due to the urgency and. Quickly turn around, it may not be getting. Using language that actually addresses the potential problem, but I do appreciate um your, your. Thinking about that and trying to, wanting to do something. Um, so.
Yeah, it's really briefly, um, part of those conversations. I, I do think the spirit was to just explicitly state that. If someone were to move or had to move, they'd still have the ability to run in a different district. And I think that concern. That you're raising, council member uh Brown makes a lot of sense. And I think one way to maybe thread the needle on it would be to. Still require a two-year clean off period after consecutive terms. Regardless of whether or not you're moving from district to the other, uh to your point, cause it, it is in that exempted area now. That could be an easy change, uh we can make to the way, make to the language if that's the direction the council wanted to go and. I agree with Tony, it is a poli- policy decision.
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate that. It's just, yeah, it just may be some clarifying language, but. You know, clarifying language. Uh another question that I had was related to the duties of the mayor section. Um. And this is the section six oh four, just a little further down on that same. Um. And I, I recognize it looks to be like section B is sort of. Codifying what we have as council policy about items. Going on to the council agenda, um only when there are three members of the council who are willing to sign on to an item. Um. But. So I guess I'm wondering about the rationale for codifying that in our charter. For section B and then C um. This se- this does seem like the way it's worded does like uh um. It's a significant change and maybe I'm misreading, but um. Significant change, change in terms of the, the authority of the mayor, that of the primary, but not exclusive responsibility for interpreting. The policies, programs and needs of city government. Bull. And as occasion requires, mayor may inform. So in, uh, is that really, but is that the way we do it, that the mayor interprets policy? I guess I, maybe I missed, maybe this is just about the, the kind of. Public relations aspect of the, of the job. And it's not really about. Policy.
I read it more as a communications function than a. A, a policy determination.
Okay, I, I, I'm again, just trying to make sure I understand.
And I think, yeah, Sandy, I can, I mean, I think that um. The intent behind that was to just recognize that. Role, the, the, you know, the. And we discussed whether or not it should go in um. But because it, the mayor will be at large, um you know, it's important to, you know, for people to understand sort of. As for moving to districts and they're, you know, so they're gonna be talking to their council member, which is. It'd be a very foreign thing for all of us. Um but really understanding, you know, that structure. And so we did think it. Would be important to try to codify harder, if I remember.
Yeah, that's right. I would just add that it's essentially codifying the presiding. Officers or duties of the officer who's representing the city and the city council and communications essentially. And um codifying the opportunity for three council members to also, you know, be able to add to the, the city council agendas.
Right, thanks. I'll, I'll save my comments on that later.
Uh, uh, council member Cummings and, and Myers, council member Myers.
I have another question. Um. Is it, it dawned on me while we were having this conversation, I mean, we um. A lot easier to make, and actually, Tony, maybe you can weigh in on this. So I'll, I actually have two questions. First one, Tony, if we move forward with seven districts and the ordinance change. Is that, like, is that something that a future city council will be able to more easily amend in terms of? Districts and roles, et cetera. Versus what we're mo- what we're had before us as a six district direct with mayor charter.
Um, yeah, yes. Um, the, the council could. Uh. Could move forward with the seven districts by ordinance uh under case law. But um in order to move forward with the six districts and directly elected mayor, it requires a charter amendment. And a charter amendment, as you know, can only be amended by a subsequent charter amendment, which is required to be presented to the voters and acted. By the voters in order to take effect.
Great, cause um. I guess the concern comes from ability to make changes to a system that we're gonna newly adopt. Um. That I haven't go to the voters versus, so, you know, being able to provide some time and flexibility around seeing how a new system works. Versus kind of jumping into districts with a charter amendment, cause um my follow-up question was gonna be. Um, one thing I, that's absent from the charter amendment is what. Um representatives who live within their district and then for whatever reason have to find new housing. Out of their district. We've seen that happen to city, since I've been on the city council, seen that happen to at least two city council members. I just recently moved as well. Um, yeah, three city council members, so um. So the idea is that, you know, if people have to move during their term. What obviously will they have the equal state in office? Or does it mean that if they move outside of their district, cause they. Have to move and they can't find housing, does that then force them off? The thing, that's something that uh is worth kind of us thinking about and trying to.
So that's a good question. Um, cause I read the charter currently. Uh, members elected to the city council have to be residents of the city. So if a person. Had to move from their current residence within the city and were unable. And is unable to locate uh suitable residence. Alternative within the city, then uh and then moved outside of the city, then that office becomes vacant upon establishing the new residents outside of the city. And the same rule would apply within the districts. So if a council member. Uh lived in district one and had to relocate to district six, then that office would become vacant.
Uh, and then I have a question for the city manager and. It's fortunately we have you here since you just came from a, a uh this city that's in district. Um, I know with board supervisors, you have districts as well, obviously, and one thing that I've been aware of is that. Supervisors don't need, you know, um two others, another supervisor to put an item on the uh agenda, that each supervisor. Put an item on the board's agenda. And I just wonder because of the fact that since we're moving to districts and each district's gonna have. Unique needs that might not give interest to other members on the board. Whether or not we need to keep flexibility around that so that, you know, maybe individual council members from their districts can put an item on the agenda. Um because, you know, what happens in the flats might not affect the west side or, you know. Um, upper, the upper west side or the east side. And so being able to not restrict. Council members from putting items on the agenda. And so I'm just curious whether or not Watsonville. Or curious about what the process was in Watsonville in terms of um council members being able to put items on the agenda since that was a city that operates with history.
Uh sure, council member Cummings. Um, good question. So Watsonville's process. Uh not that dissimilar to what's, those here still requires. Um and provides some significant authority to the mayor at setting the agenda. Um and through an agenda review process, um allows three council members. Um bring an item forward. They're also similar, similar to the structure that would be those here if um. Council member was unable to re- unable to uh. Pull two other council members to have that level of support to bring an item forward. A motion can always be made during a regular meeting. Uh requesting support to also place an item on the agenda. Um, so there is, there's multiple avenues. Uh to get there.
Thanks, those are my questions.
Uh, thank you. Um, many of my questions have been answered as well. Um, I did want to um. Go back to if a council member moved. Is there an opportunity to finish out their term or it just automatically comes vacant if they move out of district? Once we're in district, once we've transitioned to district election. I guess that question might be for Tony Kundadi.
Yes, I'm, I'm digesting the question. Um. The way it's currently written. Um. That would not be a possibility.
Would it be different for the six or the seven, Tony? That possibility?
No, it would not be diff.
Yeah, I think we're confusing a little bit. This. It may be, correct me, but Tony, the charter. The charter amendment. the charter amendment not failing the elected council member, whether it's seven, purely the election of an at large. I feel like we're sort of big, I just want to make sure that's correct.
As I'm, as I'm looking at this, I'm trying to I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to interpret this as allowing a council member to serve out the term of their office if they vacate the district. Um, but we are including rules in the draft charter amendment that that address these issues. And so it's not simply the question of just a six district with an at large versus seven districts. Um, we have provisions relating to two-stage elections, um, what have you.
I can come back, um, while you look at that. Uh, my other um, we have, we received some questions from the public. I think many of them have been answered. There was some um understanding uh that the 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 possibility of six districts and an at-large elected mayor would mean a strong mayor form of government. And so what I'm hearing is, um, just a clarifying question, that is not the case. It's still a council, city manager form of government and there would not be a strong mayor. The only difference would be in this proposal is that the mayor would be elected by the public rather than appointed by council. And the term would be a four-year term versus what's currently a one-year term.
That's right. A strong mayor form of government is a, is a form of government in which the mayor essentially functions as the manager of the city. So that's, it's not accurate to say that this proposal includes a strong mayor form of government.
Thank you. Um, the other uh question I just wanted to clarify was the ranked choice voting, um, uh, question. And my understanding is that an at-large ranked choice voting system is not possible at this point, that we are already on track under the settlement to move forward with seven districts, to transition to a seven district election. And what's posed here is an option that be six districts and an at-large mayor, but either way, we're moving to district. And ranked choice voting is not an option at this point unless we move to district and then we have ranked choice voting within district. But at-large ranked this voting is not an option.
Um, yeah, I think, I think we have to keep, we we have two, two uh different issues that that you're raising. One is can ran ranked choice voting be used as a remedy for a violation of California Voting Rights Act? And and some cities have adopted ranked choice voting systems in lieu of district elections. And and I don't know often if that is merely a policy prefer, uh, preference of those cities, or if that was as a result of a CDRA violation allegation. The second is with regard to the settlement agreement, and the settlement agreement specifies the options of district elections or 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 seven district elections or six district elections with an at-large mayor. So those were the two options that were addressed in the settlement.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Brown? Okay, if there is any further questions, if not, I will take it out publicly. Okay, thank you. If you are interested in commenting on resolution ordering on the ballot for the twenty seventh twenty twenty-two primary election, a proposed charter amendment creating six districts and an at-large directly elected mayor, can raise your hand either by dialing star nine on your phone or by selecting raise hand in the webinar controls on your computer. When it's your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set three minutes. And I will go out to work. And I have the first hand raised is I am watching you. Go ahead and you
Yeah, hi. Uh, I agree with many of the basics of this resolution, uh, but I have some comments. My reading of California law concerning elective mayor's ballot measures, section thirty-nine nine hundred, seems to indicate the question whether the voters prefer a two- or four-year term for mayor may also be presented, to which I ask, why not include that question? Why should you decide? There's no downside to the public being able to remove a bad mayor sooner than four years. Also, since a staggered district election idea is not specifically included here, I assume all six districts and the mayor will be elected at once every four years, starting in twenty twenty-two, which I don't really like. Uh, there is a serious question of the wisdom of possibly turning over all representation of every district at once, or even whether having the entire council and mayor being beyond the reach of the people for four years is really the best idea. I favor a staggered election cycle, whatever the questions are as to how fairly to begin such a staggered process. I'm sure this can be fairly done as uh this voting for all six at once idea, uh, perhaps by having three district terms initially for two-year terms chosen at random, or perhaps by the fewest votes gathered. I suspect it would take two election cycles to get this completed, but it is not too complicated, and it has real advantages of continuity and more frequent public oversight of the council makeup. The entire thrust of the mayor's section nowhere seems to indicate my preference that a mayor's duty is to provide leadership to obtain what is the pervasive will of the people for city service and wants that they are willing to pay for, limited by the authority granted by law. Said the mayor's reads somewhat like an authoritarian, inform the public of the government's needs and inform them as to changes in programs and policies they've rolled possibly unilaterally. This thrust language seems backward to my sense of government. During the recent COVID mandate fascism going on in Canada and in the USA, recognition of uh who the government mayor council worked for are in service to and purpose more welcome. Uh, I suppose I'd vote no at this point with this as if. Lastly, the existing section, uh, six oh four, a mayor being recognized by the governor for purposes of military law sounds very Orwellian to me, and I don't know what that means. I'm curious.
Thank you for calling in. Our next caller is phone number ending in one seven zero five.
Thank you. Can you? Thank you for taking my time. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're welcome.
Great. Um, so there is a lot of uh misunderstanding of the public. I read the public comment letters. This is Eric Crump. And um, glad you were able to clear up the situation with uh an at-large mayor versus strong mayor. Another um misunderstanding, I believe, is that public needs to vote on this state district election. There's a specific section, government section code three, four, eight, eight, six, that provides for councils to adopt district elections and secure California Voting Rights Act issue. And um, I believe that's what you're doing. So some of the letter writers have said that we should be voting on whether or not to have seven districts. And I don't believe that that's required, except by ordinance. And uh, so these letter writers think that this move is some nefarious power play, but they're misunderstanding the actual content and direction of council. And so I'm glad that we're able to have a discussion and clear most of that up already, but I wanted to add that that one, that some of the letter writers had said, just in that we needed to vote on this, any district, any move to district elections as part of a charter amendment, which is known. And if city attorney wanted to further clarify that, that might be helpful to the public. Thank you very much.
You so much for calling in. And are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Now is the time to raise your hand and uh comment on this item. I have caller ending in eight, five, seven, five. Go ahead and there we go.
Yes, hello, this is Glenn Schaller. Um, I have been involved politics in seven, and I don't think I have ever seen it as poorly handled as what I've watched. Um, we are moving toward just like we're doing so because of a lawsuit. We're setting up seven districts, what we've had since the late forties. We moved to a separately elected mayor. I do believe the power grab, I think it's um, a few folks would like to ensure that they may have the opportunity to continue to serve, even if they are currently living where they are not going to be run soon. Um, I'm really hoping that you all decide not to put this on the ballot, not to complicate the process, I think, toward November, and that we can allow the public to the idea that every year is some people voting for city council and some will not, and they'll have a chance to do so when it's returned. I work honorary days, I work within the sixteen cities and counties, some with districts, some um that do not. And what I find is council members, council candidates, and um speak directly to their neighbors and the entire are the folks who often get elected by leadership. Also, I do not want to change the process of people taking turns being mayor. I think it's been a healthy process whereby um folks find out what they're good at, work hard, and we have a number of examples that on this panel. Thank you for your time, and I hope not put this on the ballot.
Thank you for calling in. Um, are there any other members of the public that would like to um say anything about this item? Uh, now is the time, raise your hand. I have Esky Fire. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Brunner and council. This is a challenging issue where you decide how to neutralize it as a city member or I've been working in uh politics in in Washington DC, the state of Nevada, Colorado, California. I've found that when you have a strong mayor and a city council, the energy level of the dialogue becomes more powerful for the city. And I can speak for a number of cities that have that type of relationship. Obviously, some people will think that it's called a power grab. Uh, but one, you've been forced by a lawsuit to change. Number two, you're under a dictate to do it by no number three, you have options laid on the table. I think there's a strong preference to have a a directly elected mayor. There's a lot of moving parts on this. One of my thoughts was interesting that the council member Brown brought up is, you know, if you have to move, can you move in another move and then uh then um be able to run for another office in another, another district? Well, that's problematic. Worked with a number of cities in the southern part of the state that were sued, and that they changed the district elections. I think one of the best options was to have a flexible two-year cycle and let the mayor be elected for four years. Then you limit the term limits as you have been on the uh charter that has been presented. Uh, there's no easy solution here, but I think the, the best solution is bring it to the vote of the people and give them the option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for calling in. Our next caller has a phone number ending in five, five, four, two. Go ahead and unmute yourself, press star six, unmute yourself. Caller ending in five, five, four, two. Are you able to unmute yourself? Either, there we go. Unmute on your device or star six, there you go. Hi there, welcome.
Uh, good day, mayor and council members on two two, 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 zero, two, two, two. District election desk proposed a straight two month district election plan from long ago approved by council was to have seven councils and be approved by ordinance. Now before you today is placing a vote on the June twenty-second issue ballot to approve six districts and one at-large and a directly elected mayor. One step forward, one step back. Change to district elections must have voter approval according to the city charter. That's one step forward. Council public discussion must have seven districts, period. There's been no extensive public discourse about the direct election of a mayor. Changing our government is critical import to everyone. How does an elected mayor put current city manager form of government? We've discussed a little of that, but a whole lot more needs. Public discussion and days vote no way allows for this discussion, many of the other complex. The June vote should only be to approve or not approve seven, but plural. Why the proposal, council district and one at-large now? Because Donna Myers wants to be elected as mayor? Putting herself interests above public interest and discourse. Committee with Donna Myers, political allies, Boulder and Watkins apparently created a rigged process. The end result, have a proposal for an elected mayor is a foregoing councils compelled to proceed to support the district and one at-large. Place language to assure that the current council members be prevented from running for mayor for, say, at least four years after leaving office. This would assure the apparent current power play, not one step at a time, ask the electorate if they want district elections with seven districts, period. Then once this is approved or rejected, hold public hearings about a direct election of mayor and the other issues that have been raised. If strong sentiment exists, place a ballot measure have form of government. And that would be the path for us. I appreciate your time and thoughtful consideration. Have a good day.
Thank you for your comment. Our next caller is phone number ending in six, three, five, five. Hello?
Hi, um, Mayor Brunner and council members. This is Ann Simonton, and uh, this has, this is a big change for our city. This is something that we desperately need to have much more discussion about. For example, Tony Kundadi brought up the fact that we could use ranked choice voting in lieu of district elections. I I mean, that's unclear to me. There's so many things, this is a very big change for our city. It's imperative that we not do it in June. That's a very few people, I've lived in this community for a long time, few people show up for the June election. It should be on November at very earliest, and it, we need a lot more discussion about these, about the details, what are the options, what can we do, what, how is this gonna work out? We live in a city where sixty percent of the inhabitants are renters. You, you, you are saying that then also you won't change the city charter to say that if someone is elected in a district and then they have to move out of that district? Tony Kundadi said if they move out of the city, that's good, but what if they even had to move to a different part of the district? That also should be something that the That also should be something that the community should have the time to discuss and talk about. The implications of a landlord needing to having the right to throw somebody out that is a duly elected official. There's just so much for this, and I really hope you both know on this because this needs a lot more town hall, community discussion, and understanding by the citizens of this city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time and your comments. Are there any other uh, ideas that would like to? Item number fourteen on today's agenda. The resolution ordering on the ballot for the June seventh, two thousand twenty-two primary election. A proposed charter amendment creating six districts and an at-large directly elected mayor. It looks like, you know, more public comment on this item. I will bring it back to council. And. I'll bring it back for deliberation and a motion. And let's go back to council. I see council member pairs. Of your agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to go ahead and make the motion um, adopting the resolution placing on the ballot in seventh primary election. It proposed charter amendment creating six, at-large mayor. Um, I would like to know if there's language that there are legal folks or managers offer for. Um, I think council member Brown did points and like the, if there's any the language that we might add on.
I guess the, the question that I, I would have for the council is what specifically you would like to um, do if, if the intent is to make the council member ineligible to run for office after two full terms? Uh, even if it's for a different district, then we can write it that way.
Oh, look, my colleagues. Re- repeat that again, Tony.
I think I, I, I'm happy to kind of weigh in on what I think is the intent, Tony, if I can, if I can help clarify. But essentially, what I understood the intent to be was that we don't want to discourage any council members who want to pursue mayor and who have experience, you know, from their council time, pursue mayor. So that was the intent around allowing them to then run for mayor. But in terms of the, between districts, I think Matt, you had some suggested cleanup language around how to kind of reconcile that, which wasn't sort of our hope to have people sort of move around to run. The intent was really trying to encourage people who have experience to want to serve, but not beyond the sixteen years.
Right, uh, Councilmember Watkins. So the concern that I have heard um, council suspicion earlier was not having uh, the two-term limitation or prohibition apply to those that may be moving from one district. So what I might suggest is just striking uh, that subsection uh, three in that paragraph, that section. And including a statement, and Tony can word this better than I can, but including a statement um, in that first sentence, that just also makes clear that that is also including council members that may move on council. So again, making explicitly clear that um, regardless of whether you're moving or not, you can't be on council more than two consecutive. Not including those that may run. Wanted to make that clear. I think that was a question.
And that is what uh, currently is in our charter is the two consecutive terms and then two years um, where after two years you turn, run again. So is that the intent to kind of carry that through with the same similar intent and language? Any, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that that strike through discussion is maybe we can get that markup. So that is my motion.
I am working on that right now, and I should have it up on your screen in a minute.
Is there um, a second or to the motion? Um, Vice Mayor Watkins, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm happy to second the motion, and um, just will make a few brief comments in that. You know, I, I will speak, I think, on behalf of myself, and I think I can fairly speak on behalf of my colleagues who really, you know, put a lot of thought and effort into trying to bring forward a proposal before our council, but ultimately before our voters, given the unique circumstances that are before us in regards to the litigation that is impending and requiring us to um, districts. So I, I um, I also want to say if folks who, you know, don't feel the need to have directly elected mayor are not supportive of this charter amendment, if, if they feel strongly about that, then they should vote now. And I, and that we, and we want to hear from our community. We want to hear from our voters, and we want them to help us what form of government they'd like to see move forward for, and you know, for a long period of time. So it was really around doing our due diligence, knowing that we're in this sort of really unique time kind of of massive transition to really look at all options and to look at what I've heard and what I think a number of people have heard is wanting to explore this option. And so the option is, what we're asking really our council to do is just to put this before the voters and have them weigh in on what direction they'd like to see this transition take. And if overwhelmingly they decide that they don't want to see a directly elected mayor, then no matter what, we'll be transitioning to the seven districts. But we didn't want to pass up the opportunity to ask them this question. And so I just wanted to sort of provide that context that this is really about us doing our due diligence as our, as elected representatives of our community for our city uh, without any kind of personal or um, kind of political angle around individual needs. This is truly about the governance of our community and putting before our voters what they'd like to ask. So I just sort of wanted to add that context um, for our community and for our council in regards to how we landed in place. Um, that being said, I'm happy to, you know, continue to second the motion. I appreciate the cleanup language in regards to the considerations around the term limits and the transitions and maintaining the same clearly for the districts. Um, and um, yeah, happy to move forward with, with what we have for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watkins. Um, Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just do want to give, um, recognize the work that's done on this by the other council members and staff. And I think we can all agree that this is a major shift to our democracy. Um, it's not, not just the district election shift, but this idea that we would shift to a directly elected mayor. And personally, um, I believe that what I've heard from many members of the public is that the public should have ample opportunity to weigh in on this major decision that we're going to be putting forward and that we're going to be putting on our ballot. Um, there was a, there was ample time, an opportunity for us to have these discussions. Um, we, last year, uh, this came up at city council, for the city council, and where we were discussing essentially looking at um, ranked choice voting, at-large mayor. And I think we all reached senses on the fact that having these meetings with the community about shifting to districts, then having a direct elected mayor, possibly ranked choice voting, was a lot for us to expect the community to take in all at one time. Uh, which is why we continue to move down this path of focusing on the seven districts, which is in and of itself a major shift that maybe not many uh, members of the public want to move forward with. And um, I believe that if we want to move forward with a direct elected mayor, personally, I'd really like to hear what, what the community wants to see because um, we've already heard today uh, some options around whether the mayor's years versus four years. Um, I think there are issues around compensation.
You're muted. I heard um, there are issues around compensation, and then you cut off.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened because it was touching my house, but okay.
Continue.
There are issues around uh, compensation, number of years someone served as mayor. I think that's a valid point, bring it up. And then also, you know, think about equity in our community, shifting to a directly elected mayor versus having someone who rotates, um, you know, could actually have a lot of impacts on having diverse uh, voices serving the roles of mayor. So for example, um, you have a rotating mayor, there's opportunities for who may represent flats this side, that side, have a chance of being mayor. And you know, one of the things that see from these levels of office is that um, you know, takes a lot of time to run and having to raise a lot of money uh, could actually train see um, representing us as mayor moving forward. I think that um, that also was something I was going to bring up around the um, fifty percent plus one and runoff elections, um, of having a longer time period of when someone is running potentially. Also really negatively impacts low-income and working-class people because I think having us, having all of us run for office before, you know, even if you start in July or August, during the normal filing deadlines, to run from August to November is a pretty substantial amount of time. And if this now turns into you having to run for almost entire year, that can have a serious negative impact on who is um, going to be, you know, able to run for whose seat. Because we know that low-income people can't take off that much time work, or can working class either. And um, that also gets this idea of compensation. If we're keeping the mayor's compensation at what's roughly forty thousand dollars a year, um, we won't see as many people from lower-income communities wanting to step up to those roles. And so I think that this is something that people have been asking about in terms of having a community discussion. And so um, I'm posing a substitute motion, uh, which I've sent to mine. And it would be to turn with a process timeline for community engagement to explore charter amendments related to topics, including but not limited to directly elected mayor, history composition, mayor and council member compensation, strong mayor versus strong city manager form of government, mayor term length, ranked choice voting, among other options. Um, you know, similar to where we're at right now, if there were, you know, we moved to seven districts, and it turns out that many members of the community want to see us move to directly elected mayor and six districts, that could be a five-two vote, a four-three vote, it could be a seven-zero vote favor, or we could have opposition. But um, I feel that, that what we've been hearing is that a lot of people haven't heard about the direction we're moving in right now. This is the first time any of this language is coming forward to the community. And given the impacts this will have on our democracy, it makes the most sense that we try to get the most what is possible um, before making uh, such a drastic change. And then I guess the one thing I'll end with as well is um, I'm totally in favor of having the way in on these types of decisions, yeah, putting an item on the ballot. However, similar to the revenue measure, um, it's really important that we're doing our homework first to see if this is something that we really need on the ballot. With the revenue measure, we can have polls, and what I've heard since I've been on the council is when council goes to put items on the ballot, while this hasn't always been the case, that they often try to poll to get a sense of it from the community of what the community wants to do and where they want to go. And this seems like a decision that we're going to be making and putting before the voters that really would benefit us from us putting something out into the community first, getting a sense of what does the community want um, in terms of we're going to move forward with a direct like, what that role would be and what I've been saying before. So um, and if that's not the case, I would imagine there are a number of ballot measures that we can move forward that would be interested in seeing, um, whether that be, you know, um, real estate transfer tax or other types of items that we express interest in, but we really want to make sure that we do our homework first. So I think that if we're going to move forward with this, um, it would make the most sense for us to take our time, get community input, and, and see where the community. I'll leave my comments there, and thank you all for your hard work and time on this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Cummings. Um, we have a new substitute motion on the floor. Uh, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, and I do have some comments as well.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Brown. We have a first and a second. Hi, Brown.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to make a, a few comments here about um, I, I, my feeling about the proposal or the agenda item as it was presented to us, um, and my, my reasoning in reporting a substitute motion here. Um, some of, this has already been said by, for Cummings, I'll try not to be repetitive, but there are a few things I think maybe do bear repeating. Um, so we've been at this, we've been having this conversation about the move to district elections. And yet, the general public is largely unaware of what's going on. Um, the, I was anecdotally, um, others heard, yes, you're hearing from people anecdotally, this is a great idea. I have anecdotally had uh, many, many people call and email me, reach out to me since our agenda was published, saying what in the world is going on, like coming out of nowhere? You know, has anybody had, has the public had any chance to um, weigh in? And um, which I say no, was new to me as well, relative to you. Um, the limited opportunities that we've had for public discussion, um, in around seven districts, there's been no extensive public discourse about the election of an at-large mayor. Um, the, and, and uh, you know, I'll just say, um, throughout the process, I've expressed my dismay about the way this decision uh, move district elections has forced upon us, so I won't repeat all of that. But incredible loss. And until today, been discussing making that transition without going out to the voters. Um, we have been consistently advised that that is the move this way forward, address um, the potential claim and what was agreed to in the settlement agreement. Um, not going to the voters, we don't need to do that under CRA, which trumps the charter. Um, so, you know, I've been, and I believe that we were all, um, however, um, you know, uh, uncomfortably or, you know, um, yeah, uncomfortably uh, moving through that process, hearing and responding to that, that recommendation, that advice way. And now here we are with a proposal that's very different. Um, and we've also been told that district elections will be forthcoming no matter what. Um, yeah, I mean, it may, that's true, I suppose, but no, it's definitely the results of choices that have been made by the council, by majority members of councils, now free iterations of this um, over the past two years that have been made, and those have been made largely behind closed doors. Um, we have not had this conversation out in the public. We finally, over the course of the past, uh, you know, last fall, have started talking about it. Um, I don't believe we've, um, I believe there's a lot more work. Um, this isn't, this isn't a matter of me supporting or opposing this particular proposal and the idea of an at-large mayor if it's going to move district election. I don't know. I don't. I'm a member of this council who has been following this pretty carefully and closely, and I don't know. And so I think that tells, I mean, that tells me something about um, what, what that looks like, put a question before the voter. Um, I agree that, you know, the voter, it is important to put this before the voters. And um, so not supporting moving forward in the way that was proposed yesterday prior to a substitute motion, um, you know, Um, you know. That's it's it's well. I guess I'll just, I'll I'll just take a step back, I'm gonna, I I cause I don't wanna go on and on about this, but you know, I just wanna say, you know. It's it's a proposal that has been um pretty hastily put together. Um there, you know, I I'm just gonna highlight the fact that we have had all this time to. Contemplating this and you know, moving in this direction, now that nobody on this council came forward and said wanna look. So it's not about six or seven, it's about the process by which. Um. It's a fundamental change to our democracy, our system of representation. And if we wanted to stand up over time, and I believe you all when you say that that's what we're looking for. Um it deserves more than a rush session and resolution that I believe has been hastily written with. You know, you know, no, all respect to our staff and everybody who's and council members who have been working to try to. Figure out how to navigate this very difficult terrain that has largely been imposed upon us. Um but it it we ha- we don't, we haven't had time. And um you know, I think if we're, we're gonna talk about a charter change. And we should be, we should prob- we should open up that conversation of this base. Because this is one very specific type of charter change. And none of the others have been kind of really talked about at least. Now with your committee, I understand we've had that conversation, but it hasn't happened in a way that's kind of legible or apparent to the general, the public. And for the other members of the council till today. Um I don't say this to um just that I'm, you know, criti- I I wanna criticize your work. Or your intentions, but this is a major. And you know, I I think that we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to the public to think it through before we put something on the ballot. That is much more complex. Um. Has many, many potential unintended consequences or and intended consequences that we may not. All be all understood. Um I I just think that we. So um I guess I'll. There, um so tha- that's my rationale, this isn't about me whether or not I support the at large mayor, this is about. Now the context in which we're making that decision, that it's been brought to us.
Mayor, you're.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Calum Terry Johnson.
Thank you, um yeah, I would like to thank uh my city council colleagues and and staff colleagues. For all your work on this and callers and who've written and called. Um, you know, I think I'll keep my comments pretty brief. Um, w- we as a council agreed to this ad hoc committee last year. We formed this ad hoc committee to explore this very issue of um an at large. Mayor and secretary and and that's what you've done, put a lot of work into it and um you've. To me, the presentation that we saw earlier, you've done your homework and you've done your due diligence. Um this, so this isn't new to me and um it's not new to some of the constituents that have reached out to me and called me and written me letters. And emails, um I'd like to hear from the community and I think putting it on the ballot is the ultimate democratic process. A way for us to hear from the community, it's clear from what I heard, staff and legal people that we have. A timing issue, that's unfortunate, but it's clear that that's reality that we find ourselves in. Um and it's also clear from some of the questions I asked and others asked that that staff is. I has a outreach process ready to go, sort of shovel ready, but have been waiting for us to be able to bring this to the public in this format. Um so so um those are my sentiments, I think putting it before the voters. Um is is important, I think if we do it twice now and then again in twenty twenty four, it becomes. More negatively impactful and more difficult for voters, so I think the best way to engage is to. Um work hard in the next several months, engage voters and let the voters decide. So thanks everyone for your work.
Thank you, Calum, uh Councilmember Calum Terry Johnson. Um and I think, you know, a lot of the. Points that were made are really important in us determining a path forward. Um it this is new to me as well as a, as a new. Newer council members, some of these decisions were made prior to joining our city council. But one thing has been clear is that we, we are moving, we have adopted. Uh we are in settlement agreement to move forward with seven districts. So that's not a question at this point. Um and that does not need to go on a June ballot to move to seven districts. So I wanted to just say that November, um we will be moving to seven districts. I think what we brought up based on the settlement agreement, there was another option. Under that settlement agreement and that was that we could also choose to go to six districts. An at large mayor and so that question um for us to make. Would require a charter name, seven districts not require a charter. Six. Does and so that's why that would go to public. In the June ballot, why the June ballot, because it has to be before our. Settlement agreement deadline in November and so if we wait till November, we. We can't ask that question unless we go to seven districts. And then in a future couple of years, change charter at that point. Which might mean and would most likely mean changing the map, changing the districts then. And so um it's so much information to absorb and to learn and. There were a lot of clarifying points today, I think, um uh the. The the big thing is uh letting the. This item is not us as a council deciding that there's going to be six districts mayor. That's not what's before us, it's us saying, hey, let's put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. They wanna keep seven districts or A or B, seven districts or. These districts with an at large mayor and um. So I think over the next few months, if if we move forward in that direction. The next month before the June seventh elec- uh election. Um will need to be a lot of public and and out. And um I'm glad uh Councilmember Calum Terry Johnson, you asked some of those questions that I had also asked. Um earlier about outreach, what where is, where is that outreach, in person, online? Um at events, at residences, um what does that look like, what other language? How are we reaching people, what demographic to make sure there are small group stakeholders, for example. That the public is clear on the two options that are before us. Um. And I think that, you know, having, having that item on the. The June ballot will help firm in, uh and again, Casey, he might correct me if I'm wrong, you said there's already. Check maps that the demographer.
We're. If you all vote to move forward with this, we are prepared to release the six district map. We have three drafts.
Okay, so there's currently three drafts of seven districts. And that's what we're moving forward, but before, before we head there, this is an option to. Um really let the voters decide. Before it gets too tricky later on, changing, let's determine our district now. And move forward rather than go to seven districts and then decide if. Not later, um. So can we, uh. Thank you for all the work, but can we, the, there's a substitute motion?
Can we, yes, and um. I have some alternative language for the resolution, but I think you should proceed to vote on whether to accept the substitute motion first.
Thank you. So the substitute motion to return with a process and timeline for community engagement. Or charter amendments related to topics, leading but not limited to directly elected mayor. District composition, mayor and council member compensation, strong mayor versus. Strong city manager form of government, mayor term length and rank voting among others. Okay, so is um. We have a first, this is a motion by Councilmember Cummings and a second by Councilmember Brown and so. Um.
So this, the, you have to vote to decide whether to accept substitute motion and then if you. Uh vote to accept it, then you subsequent, then you can proceed to voting on the language of.
So I'm going to ask the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Member Calum Terry Johnson?
No.
Sir?
No.
Coming?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mayor?
Of no, but I do just wanna record, I recognize that any of the things in this motion are things that still be continued. Pass. Work as we um basically for collection, but. For the motion, um mainly for the reason of of you are going to district. Provide a very clear, that's clearly aware. Day obviously. Um, any of these things are that. Goss does make make this. I appreciate the motion. No.
Vice Mayor Watson?
No.
Mayor Breer?
No, and also for reasons Mayor Myers brought up, um this is part of the engagement that. Will happen regardless and the future work that for us. Um so thank you for bringing up those items at this point. I'm going to move over now back to our original motion. And if we could come back to that motion, is there a written version or the maker of the motion read that motion?
He was.
The motion was simply to adopt the resolution as presented with a modification to subsection D of section. Yeah, six oh one, I believe, and I'll share the language with you at this point.
Thank you.
Funny, really quick, is this section six oh one?
I believe so. Yes, six oh one subsection D.
You just lost motion.
This is the alternative line, sorry.
There we go. Uh so no member of the council shall be eligible for reelection. Or for election to a different council district two years. I one general cycle after the expiration of the second consecutive full term of the office. However, this prohibition shall not bar one, a council member elected by district from running for mayor. Immediately after terms as a council member. Or two, the mayor from running as a by district council member immediately after terms. With that said, in no event may any person serve on the council as either a council member or the mayor for more than sixteen consecutive.
I accept that change.
Does the second or the motion accept that change?
I do, and I just, I have one brief comment, if if this would be a good time or I could do that leaders.
You can do that now.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I just, I just wanna thank and acknowledge my colleagues for this robust session, I think. It was um it was very insightful and the reality is. I don't think there is one, one way to do it completely perfect in anybody's eyes, right? And there are so many iterations of what this will look like, with. Two to four years, whether it be not to have consecutive terms or to others or. And the timing isn't ideal and I acknowledge that as well and given the considerations and the time constraint that we're under in regards to the seven districts. That's where we are, I appreciate where Councilmember Myers really highlighted that a number of the things in the, in the prior motion. Really are priorities for exploration as we move forward, um and just wanna kind of thank our council. Robust and it's part of how it goes, right? And so I appreciate all of the thought and all of the input that was provided, I understand it's imperfect and I don't know if there is a perfect here. So it's just sort of holding a both and of that, kind of understanding that and ultimately it's not. Diversity to do as best we can outreach to every member of our community about what is before them. So that they can go into the election, understanding what they're. And and to hear from them is the ultimate form of democracy, which I really appreciate that process. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank colleagues for this discussion. And I too a second or, you know, approve of the, of the modified language, I appreciate Councilmember Brown bringing that up for clarification.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Okay, um so now we'll do a roll call vote on this motion. And I'd like to ask the speaker. Roll call vote.
Mayor, Councilmember Calum Terry Johnson?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
May?
No, and I'll say for the record that um. Part of the direction that was why I was supporting this back in November was that. Um I'd made a friendly amendment through the process and timeline, media engagement, which was agreed upon, we all voted on. Um not add timeline and process rounds. You know, to be having this, so. I don't have a strong leaning in either direction of or reelect mayor or rotating mayor. Um but I do think that process is very important when making these major decisions about the shift from democracy. So um given that community hasn't had a good opportunity to weigh in and up till last Thursday did not have a copy of the proposed language. Um for roles select re- elect mayor in the ballot language, um I don't think that we've had very good. Not voting in favor of this time, but that doesn't mean I'm opposed to having at large mayor or rotating.
Brown?
Uh no, and I, the record would just reiterate that this is really about um process for me. And um so I'll, I'll leave it, no.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor? I, I do wanna state for the record, um was vacations and also a caller tonight. Who um indicated that this guns, I run for elected mayor. I will publicly state right now, I am not running for mayor. So there's no intent behind this except the recognition that. Uh having multiple election periods and cycles where we are going back and asking the voters for different. All cause a lot of, and actually I think they'll disincentivize from running. Um I, you know, wanna echo the the mayor's comments that we are moving this. Um. Despite. Of the work of the committee and trying to also look at process, he decided the most important process, always go to your voters. Okay, that is ultimate, that is the ultimate way that we should. That bring the. So um, I appreciate the work of my colleague and I know this is very hard, very, very hard. Um, I do think going to the voters are very important now, very important, so I appreciate it. Comments though and. Voters say, um, so I'm an I.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Brunner?
Aye. That motion passes five two. And um, I would like to ask. Um, our city staff for um, uh, engagement timeline and that process. Um, when we can have that information and how we can be involved to help share that information. That process.
Mayor Brunner, we, now that we have direction, we will be finalizing all those details, we will post a lot of this on our district elections page and we will share it with the council and. Beg of you to share it, we want, we want the information out and we want this to be successful, we want the outreach to be successful.
I think it would also, thank you Casey, it would also be helpful to know what the full engagement plan is. And um, how we can participate in in all of the aspects of it, whether it's in person, whether it's um online. Whether, you know, it's small stakeholder groups. Whether it's phone calls. I think, you know, we're all in in making sure that this process, that we can all be successful and making sure the public is informed for making a decision.
Absolutely, uh, we will, we will keep you all um involved and engaged in this, so.
Thank you so much, do you have anything else to add? Um, I, City Manager Matt Huficker, you you almost looked like you were about.
I was thinking about it, Mayor Brunner, um, I just want to, I want to echo comments that we are eager to ro- start this robust process. To have to put, put together a very thoughtful approach that will meet our community members where they are, uh, including our. So, um, and and working with Elizabeth Smith on our team as well, we've put out press release. Uh, with those details and I can certainly in my next uh update to the council provide more details. Uh, and in the interim to the timeline places, um, and approach out to the council. Moving into this work and today's decision by the councils were helpful, allowing us to.
Thank you so much. Uh, let's see, I saw two hands go up, council member Cummings and then council member Brown.
I had a question for the staff, which is some of the comments that were made, um, we were making deliberations, were mentioning that. Um, you know, there already is a process and timeline for a number of topics that brought up in my motion to come back, so I'm wondering. When we should expect to see that come back as well, get an update on that because a number of those related to um. Thank choice voting, the charter amendment committee, all sorts of other options, and since it sounded like. Previous direction had been given on that, why um, that motion wasn't accepted, then I think it would be good to be. Decent of when we're going to be having those conversations, process, timeline will be established for that as well.
I uh, I think that, uh, I appreciate that council member coming, um, I think that the. Sense of urgency from the committee on this sort of deferred the considerations and everything else. I did have a uh work plan drafted for their consideration, which they have not had a chance to review yet because, because the timeliness of this one particular thing. Uh, we, I think that we will bring that to the committee for their direction on next steps, uh. Committee members, uh, you may want to weigh in on that too, but that, that's my thought.
I would just add, uh, council member Cummings, a number of questions and vision points that were included in your motion that we need to run to ground. Uh, I don't know that Casey's work plan was inclusive of all items there, but that's certainly a discussion we can have with the committee. With the, with the expectation being, uh, the committee was tasked with four responsibilities and what we fully covered today. Will some decisions. Uh thoroughly reviewed, um, in a timeline. Uh, that that'll be work, um, we can.
Yeah, I just, I guess one point I'll make to those, you know, there's. Like some of these decisions definitely need the input of the community, shouldn't be just solely made by the subcommittee, so, yeah. It'd be good to hear about what could come back and when, and then how it's determined engagements in communities and those directions. So, all in my comments there, but I'm mainly saying this too because um, there's a lot of. Feelings of mistrust around people in the community with what the council says it's going to do versus what ends up happening, and I just don't want to see us, you know. Going back into a situation where we have more division in the community and less trust with our local.
Thank you, council member Cummings, for your comments. Uh, council member Brown, did you still want to, or you took your hand down?
Thanks, Mayor, my question was about, you know, all the rest of it, but you know, where's that going to go? And and will we ever hear about it again, so yeah, thanks.
Thank you, um, Vice Mayor Watkins?
I just wanted to offer that if there are individuals that some of my colleagues do want to refer to the committee or to the staff that had. You know, concerns, please feel free to do that, that we do want to hear from everybody, and so if there are specific people that you're hearing from that we're not. Hearing from, please, our way as we start to explore some of these others.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watkins. Okay, thank you so much, Casey, for joining us today.
Thank you very much, I.
Oh, you froze up. Uh, okay, well, thank you so much, um, I'm going to call a five minute break. And then we will return with agenda item number fifteen, which is a presentation on the results from the National Community Survey. So we'll return here at five thirty-five. Thank you so much. Everyone a chance back. In line. Turn your cameras on. So. Someone is not muted and um. Wondering if this spark is ready?
That's permanent.
Okay. All right, so um, that was a quick break, thank you. We are now continuing with our next agenda item number fifteen. Which is a presentation and I just wanted to make sure normally we um have presentations at the beginning of our meeting. And I've been scheduling uh presentations to start our meeting off and um, in this. Situation, our presenter was unable to attend at the beginning of the meeting, so we were able to. Schedule this for the end of the meeting instead, so I really um tried to be flexible, thank you Jade Orocha. Director of Survey Research Polco, and thank you for joining us today and our communications director Elizabeth Smith. This is a presentation item on the results from National Community Survey. The order will be a presentation of the item by Jade Orocha. And followed by questions from council, since this item is only intended to provide council with information, we will not be taking public comment on this. So go ahead, welcome Jade, thank you for being here and thanks for being flexible with time.
Yes, thank you so much for having me and I appreciate your flexibility as well, uh, at different time zones and um, yeah, so I'm really happy to be here.
Um, I'm not, actually, I'm sorry Jade, I'm sorry Jade, I just wanted to say a couple of things before you got started.
Please.
Um, thank you, um, my name's Elizabeth Smith, I'm the communications manager for the city, um, we initiated this process with Polco. Um, uh, to do the National Community Survey as a benchmark for the city, we haven't ever done anything like this before, we've done. Polls on specific issues, but not a broad range of quality of life, um, issues and investigation, um. Uh, we really wanted to take the temperature of the community on a regular basis, and so we'll be doing this survey every two years, um. It's a reliable set of data points that we can use uh to try to understand issues that are important to the community, and then also how to, how to spend our precious time and monetary resources. Pressing this. Um, and then uh, one last thing that I want the council to know is that as we're using the Polco platform for this survey, we do also have access to. Um, to a survey tool and um, are building a panel of Santa Cruz residents who will get notified anytime we have an engagement opportunity. So, um, when we launched the district elections, um, maps, the first set of map. Immediately got some responses on that, um, on that effort and already have sixty, sixty piece of people have weighed in. Um, on those maps, uh, without us doing a lot of. A lot of promotion as we were waiting on the decision. Forward, so just know that that's a resource to you and Jade, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but I wanted to get, wanted you to get into the meat of everything and me to do my little preamble before you got started, so.
So much.
Please, please feel free to take it away Jade and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth, um, yeah, but no, no problem at all, I'm happy that you did that, um. And I actually, before I jumped into the results, I actually wanted to thank Elizabeth for, uh, she was our primary contact throughout the duration of this project. A pleasure to work with, uh, very helpful throughout the survey development and implementation process. Um, but with that, let me go ahead and share my. Everybody see that, okay? Okay. So this, since this is your first time working, that's just a little bit of background about who we are, um, so we are Polco's National Research Center. Uh, National Research Center has been a, um, the premier community survey, so it's a survey expert in the country for more than twenty-five years now. Um, and then back to twenty nineteen, we merged with online engagement platform Polco. Uh, worked with local governments to engage their residents online, um, so that brings a lot more functionality and um. Capacity to the services that we are able to offer our clients, in addition to the. Regular community surveys such as the National Community Survey, as Elizabeth has already mentioned, you have a lot more um ability to do further outreach community using the platform. Talk a little bit more about that at the end of the presentation. Um, and so before I dive into Santa Cruz's specific survey results, uh, just a really brief overview about what. Our clients usually use data for, so um, most often these survey results mon- um, are used to monitor trends and resident opinion over time as you. Conduct a survey again, over time you will establish trend line and be able to identify um increases and decreases in ratings. Measure about government performance and public stress ratings, um, to inform budget decisions as well as planned use. Strategic planning decisions, uh, some of our clients even use their survey results to inform creating a strategic plan if they don't, we have one. And finally, uh, we do have a, a robust. Uh, database, nationally. Certainly, um, but our clients also compare their own ratings to those to other. The, the NPS National Community Survey, this is a standardized five page simple community survey, uh, and it is structured around these. Ten facets of community livability that you see on the screen, um, we've found that these align most closely with the aspects of livability and community residents. Have identified as being most. Related to their quality of life where they live, uh, in addition to that, it's also a great way to organize the results in the report. Um, in terms of usefulness by department, so um, different department heads can easily access their results. Hosted in the long PDF and then the report's also available on Tableau Public, in a more interactive online format, you can click through the tab there. Uh, it's just great to the topics we have choice. So that is how the overall format uh of the reporting and the. And I do want to cover the methodology that we use for driving into the specific results for the city, so the survey was conducted from October first. Sorry, October first, twenty twenty-one to November ninth. Um, and we employed a hybrid. For this, so there were a total of twenty-seven households selected in the community. Um, these households were randomly selected and in order to um, complete that process, we start with lists of households that are provided by the US School Service. We use USPS address list because they are the most comprehensive and up to date, um, unlike some other lists. Ability billing list, voter registration records, which may not, which typically do not include the entire community. Starting with those USPS lists of households, we then geo-coded each household, um, within the zip codes that serve Santa Cruz. To ensure that each household in eligible list is actually within city limits. And then from that list, then identified as within city limits, we randomly selected twenty-seven houses to receive the survey invitation. These twenty-seven house, twenty-seven hundred households were split into two groups, twelve hundred received um, a three-part mailing, fifteen hundred received a three-part mailing. Uh, just for to get a little bit more into that, so that three-part mailing, that group A mailing, those folks received a postcard in the mail that included. To take the survey online, um, as well as a web link so that they can go online to, right? That was followed by survey packets, included, included the five page paper survey in the mail one week later. And followed by a second survey packet, the a week after that. Both of those uh hard copy surveys were accompanied by a cover letter with interest, also included a web link so they could go online to complete it as well. Uh, and a postage cage which. So that group, group A, had the option to complete the survey, the survey either online or return the first survey in the mail. The fifteen hundred group B respondents, recipients rather, um, they received two postcard invitations to complete the survey online, one week apart. The reason for this methodology is that we are, and especially in a new community, but Santa Cruz is not, or hadn't conducted some of the NPS. Uh, or a survey like it in years. Um, we are trying to gauge the difference in response between these two groups and. Uh, it is far more cost effective to invite residents to take the survey online as well as. Be go-friendly to uh keep printing and mailing and a lot, a lot, um, lots of postage costs, et cetera. Um, so we are trying to gauge difference in response rates between those who receive online invitation versus those who receive the survey in the mail. Um, and use that information to form our recommended methodology going forward in future survey years. We found a really robust survey response using this split method in Santa Cruz, a total of four hundred seventy-four responses received. Overall, response rate of eighteen percent nationwide, we see that in average around fifteen up to about twenty percent. So you all are, and then twenty percent is really on the high end for this um hybrid approach, so Santa Cruz did see a, a successful response rate. In addition to the probability based, that's because of the random sample nature of the address selection, in addition to that probability based. We also conducted an online only open participation community-wide survey, this survey opened about a month after those first mailings went out, a random sample survey. Uh, and that survey was promoted to the public at large. Noted on the city website, social media, uh, and we received three hundred and ninety-three responses to that survey. Uh, and we received three hundred and ninety-three responses to that survey. Those data were collected separately, separate, different web links for the open participation survey. Uh, and so those two data sets were separated. The body of the report and the main results of the report reflects just the random sample responses to the survey. But you can also find separately the responses to the open participation survey toward the end of the PDF report. Um, and also the Tableau Public report as well. Both of those were statistically weighted to reflect the demographics of Santa Cruz overall. Um, and we do that process, the statistical weighting process, uh in order to make your results more representative of the. I'll talk about that more in the next slide. Um, with four hundred and seventy-four responses received for that scientific survey. That gives us a plus or minus four point five percent margin of error, uh which is great. We shoot for a five percent or less margin of error for these types of surveys, so four point five percent is um um perfect. And well within what we like to see. Uh, on that subject of weighting, so this weighting people is also included in the report. Demographic weighting is an important part of survey research, uh because we hear from different, a different. Uh, proportions of folks in different demographics that actually live in the community. So just to broadly generalize, we hear from far fewer residents who are young, residents who are of color. Who are renters, who live in tax housing, um and um slightly fewer male than female. So those are just fairly, very broad generalizations about who under respond surveys. So this process is statistical first to balancing that, how we look at census data and American Community Survey data for Santa Cruz. And then we use statistical adjustments to align the survey data so that they are more representative of your community as a whole. So I previously mentioned our national benchmark database, there are currently more than five hundred communities in this database. Approximately, uh, and these are communities that have surveyed within the five years, this data is fresh and relevant. Um, Santa Cruz also elected to compare their results to a subset of communities. So I will talk about that momentarily more um in more detail. So getting into Santa Cruz's specific results, um, there are two broad questions on the survey asking about both. Quality and the importance, very broad uh characteristics of the community and um facets of community livability. So this first slide is showing the responses to that first quality question. Those percentages are combined excellent or good rating thirteen. So again, reflects the um. The aspects of community livability that I mentioned earlier, economy, safety, natural environment, et cetera. That same question that asked on an important scale, percent essential or very important combined. And I'm showing you these two slides to show you how we populate our, this is our quality and importance, which also included its support. So we identify any facets that are located in that lower right quadrant of this uh chart. As those that are, have been rated relatively higher in importance to lower in quality than the other facets of community livability. We use this information to inform some of the highlights that we've written in other next steps that we might recommend. So looking at the comparisons to the national benchmarks, um, we, out of total of number of items on the survey. For which benchmark comparisons were available, nine were rated higher than the national averages, seven were rated similar. And then others, seven were rated lower than the national. And then, as I mentioned before, we have two custom peer benchmarks. So these benchmarks are actually what will be reflected in the body of the report versus the national one. Uh, this custom subset uh were a group of communities that included those that are similar. All of the communities were in the same region as Santa Cruz, so Pacific region. And then also within that further subset of similar population size, well as similar median households in Santa Cruz. Try to identify other communities that are most likely. So within that custom subset. Thirteen items were ranked higher, were rated higher than the averages, fifty-eight were similar, and then forty-two were lower. Getting into the survey highlights, and I do want to point out these highlights are what stood out to us as survey researchers. Uh, that there is a wealth of information in the report. Further data points and further highlights to be gained as well. And so our first key finding, safety is important to Santa Cruz. So when asked to rate, as I showed on those previous slides, and asked to rate both the quality and the importance of the overall feeling of safety in the city. Residents gave this facet of livability a relatively lower quality rating and relatively higher importance rating. So uh indicating that this is an area of focus. So ratings within this facet in general did tend to be lower than both. And peer community benchmark comparisons, um particularly regarding safety um in their neighborhoods and in the downtown area. But also from other types of uh crime um and um safety. Looking at safety-related services, um when evaluating these, uh. A majority of residents gave excellent or good ratings to four out of the six of these safety-related. And then two were were rated positively by a few of them, half responded, those were police services and crime prevention. And then these safety services were lower than the, these are again reflecting the peer community comparison. So ratings for EMS, ambulance, police services, and prevention were lower than the peer benchmarks. These other ratings were similar to the peer. I think he finding services for unhoused residents is an emergent need. So in addition to the standardized questions on the survey for which we can provide benchmark comparisons, uh there's also space on the survey for. Uh, for our communities to ask custom questions as well. So we don't have benchmarks available for these unique custom questions. They vary from community to community, but this was a unique custom question for the survey. So this question gauged, gauged resident support for funding a variety of. Um, and about nine in ten residents strongly or somewhat supported um the following um. Items in this list related to unhoused residents. So mental health crisis response services, developing affordable housing, reliable services for the unhoused. Well as outreach, outreach and case management services for the unhoused. And all of these goes to the top of the priority list. And a different question that asked residents to rate the importance of addressing issues related. More than eight in ten residents thought it was essential or very important to the city to partner with other organizations. Um, that provide services to people experiencing homelessness, outreach, case management services. Um, about three quarters thought it was important for the state to create affordable housing opportunities, emergency shelter. Excuse me, provide access to other services. They were least likely to rate increased enforcement of the city's camping laws. As central or very. Getting to our third key finding, mobility is still a community priority. So survey respondents also gave relatively low quality ratings and relative. Overall quality of the transportation system in Santa Cruz, so this is another suggested area of community priority. Ratings for alternative transportation tended to be similar to those given in other peer communities. Um, so roughly two-thirds of residents gave positive reviews. Bicycle and easy travel, walking in the city, about one quarter were pleased to travel by public transportation. Um, those were those services, walking bicycles, public transportation, those were on car with the peer benchmark compares. Um, vehicle-related travel, easy travel, car, traffic flow in major streets, those I am rated lower than the bench. Um, looking at our participation in alternative transportation, however, Santa Cruz. Ended to ratings that were higher than the peer benchmark comparisons. So uh Santa Cruz residents were much more likely than those in other communities who have walked or biked or driving. And then more likely than others, households that have lived alone. Uh, and then using transport, public transportation, that twenty-five percent had done that at least once in the past year of that. And looking at mobility-related services, most of these tended again to be similar to the national, to the peer benchmark. Uh, with about four in ten giving high marks to street lighting, street cleaning, traffic timing, traffic services. Um, and then roughly one-third there giving positive marks, sidewalk maintenance, traffic enforcement to prepare. Street cleaning and traffic enforcement were lower than those those peer benchmark comparisons, all others were similar. Uh, looking again at that priorities question for funding potential city projects, and I'll show that. Question in full at towards the end of the presentation. Um, at at least nine in ten residents strongly or somewhat supported the city funding. Maintaining the city's streets, roads, sidewalks, and other public facilities. And at least eight in ten supported city increasing sustainable transportation as less. Our fourth key finding, the natural environment is a picture of Santa Cruz. So more than eight in ten residents gave positive ratings to the overall quality of the natural environment in Santa Cruz. Higher than both the national and peer community benchmark comparisons. And then ratings for air quality, subdivision of natural areas, water, also above peer community averages. Uh, and and um natural environment, environment-related services, yardways, preservation. Open space, cycling, um, these were rated positively by at least six in ten residents. And or similar to or higher than those peer community compares well. Rating their level of support for initiatives related to the natural environment. So most residents voiced strong support for funding each of these. These included addressing the impact of climate change, mitigating risks of wildfires in open spaces, natural areas, and then maintaining park spaces. And recreational facilities, about nine in ten residents voiced support for each. Fifth and final key finding, the economy is a central area focused for the city, with affordability particularly acute. And so about nine in ten residents gave positive ratings to Santa Cruz's place to visit, this was higher than both the national and peer benchmarks. And then ratings for other um aspects of economy tended to be similar to or lower than those given, given in other peer communities. Uh, those that were lower included cost of living, affordable quality housing, and economic development. Um, I do want to mention while we are on this slide that uh cost of living and affordable quality housing. Uh, while this is lower than the the national and the peer benchmark comparisons, um, we have also seen. Um, since this is the first time that you are serving with us, since you don't have trend lines for this data, I do want, just want to highlight here that we've seen. Decreases in these two areas in particular, both regionally and the Pacific region itself. In the last couple of years in particular, I wanted to highlight that. Um, looking at items specifically related to job, jobs and affordability. So um. Developing affordable housing for low and moderate households and support for local businesses. Um, at least nine in ten residents strongly, somewhat supported that. Eight in ten supported improving Santa Cruz recruiting businesses and jobs for the city, well, job training programs. This was the um policy question, the the city funding question in its entirety. Um, I did talk about each of these pieces individually as they related to the different facets to highlight. The facets of the question in its entirety as well as the question on on the impact of people experiencing homework. This is how they were formatted on this. And this is the recap of the conclusions I just covered. Uh, some of our suggested steps for digging deeper, um, that's already spoke about this. But you do have the opportunity to follow up much as you like on the Polco platform. Um, and we highly encourage our clients to do, so you have ongoing access to that platform as well as your subscriber, existing subscriber base, which will continue to grow over time. As you continue to conduct surveys on the platform. So some of our suggestions, um, we do offer a business survey. For business owners and managers, um, since economy was again really um identified as an area of focus. This has an economic development and workforce survey available, a law enforcement and policing survey, uh the national law enforcement survey. Um, and then we also have, so those top three items there, we have full surveys on those areas that are available to you. And then um additionally, we have a number hundreds really of individual questions. Available in our library on the Polco platform, quite a few of those relate, that was identified as. One of the um areas for city funding and that uh custom question, so some opportunity there for follow-up as well. And then um, yeah, there's, as I have mentioned in Elizabeth's too, but I don't want to um. Belabor this point, but lots and lots of opportunities for further outreach on the platform. Um, when I checked about fifteen minutes ago, um, I believe Santa Cruz had five hundred and forty panelers. Uh, subscribers already. Um, so that is from survey efforts that you've already conducted. Each time uh residents are invited to take a survey online on the Polco platform, they're asked if they would like to subscribe to the the city's profile. So that will build your subscriber base over time and give you um a larger and larger panel to engage with over time. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much Jade. Let's, are there any council members with questions for Jade or for Elizabeth Smith? Council member commentary, John.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, that was amazing amount of information filled into what you just provided. So I appreciate that. Um, I I don't really know who this question goes to, maybe Elizabeth. Um, I'm just wondering how we will look at this really rich information. In comparison to what we collect locally, and I'm thinking about um the community assessment project. Survey that's done every other year and indicators for the four outcomes that's done at the county level. So is there a plan for us to, I mean, the the comparison here is really great. There are plans for us to see how we're, how and where it aligns, a lot of alignment with the areas that we are looking at here and the areas around. Core condition app survey, um, which is what we've used and embedded into the health and all policies of measuring our. So just where is all of, where is the intersectionality? I think, I think there's a lot of.
We have, you know, honestly, there, um, that's, that's territory that we haven't um charted yet. And I think there is opportunity. However, I want to be clear, you know, this is a really specific set of data. And and we want to make sure that we're sort of, it's, it's um capsulated in this set of data. And we don't want to make assumptions on how it connects to other data, but I do think that there are ways that we, what trends are, we're seeing across. And if there are any sort of trends in sort of vertical demographic areas that we need to look at as a, as a city. Um, but uh I think that is to be determined. Mostly, I just wanted to get us on a regular schedule of having some benchmarks. So that our council members had uh data to go on and our department heads had data go on on where are our communities' priorities. Unrelated to any other issue, but just general quality of, so um. But I love, I love your idea, Shebra, so I, I will check into that and look into how we create. At least in your strategic planning process or other times where we have inflection for planning and um and assessment.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think, um, I mean, those other um areas, th- those other surveys and areas I've talked about are more at the. County level, so I don't, I haven't seen anything this robust and rich at city levels really great. Um, and maybe we can, as health and all policies. Um, and maybe we can, as health and all policies subcommittee, connect with and talk about what that next up. Thank you for the work. It's, it's so exciting as a grant writer to see data like this that's like zeroed in. It makes me really happy. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Kalentari Johnson. Uh, council member Myers.
Yeah, I wanted to thank, um, thank our presenter and, and, um, just also recognize how much information in here. Um, and I, yeah, I guess maybe asking, I just had a question, I guess, for our city manager or, um, sort of how, how do you see this sort of getting used? And the work ahead around, you know, some of our main work areas? Or is this something that the council can use, for example, in a strategic planning session? Or kind of where does this fit in our sort of role as policy?
Yeah, thanks, council member Myers. I, I would echo Elizabeth's comments. I think it's a really powerful tool to help inform the council's future work around strategic planning. I think it also sheds some light on and provides some really helpful context to some of the other survey work done. Uh, we did the poll just a couple of weeks ago that was, you know, just focused on likely voters. This, uh, this survey is much broader than that. And I, I also does fairly significant alignment of what the community is telling us is supposed to be. What areas they want us to prioritize. And it allows us to be intentional as work through this strategic plan as well as, um, the upcoming budget process. Sure that, uh, that information is reflective, um, collective decisions to make. So I'm excited about it as well. I'm a data nerd, uh, like many of us are. And, uh, also always take opportunities, data-driven approach to the work we're doing. I see this as being a really powerful tool that we can continue doing and, and use this as a baseline.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, if, if, between the, uh, the polling we did a couple, you know, three weeks ago now and this data. I mean, to me, it, I think it reflects on, you know, a lot of the emphasis we've done over the last year and a half. So is, you know, we're on track this, this, whether that's housing production, um, the economic development steps that were done. You know, after, before and after COVID, I guess we're always going to be in COVID. But also more importantly, some of the public safety, some of the homeless policy as well. I think it's all tracking with requests that community and have us in aid policy. So, um, it's, it's, yeah, it's a great, great set of data. Thank you. Thank you for doing it. The work. Thank you for the thorough report.
Thank you, council member Myers. Council member Brown.
Mayor, and thank you so much, uh, for this, this wonderful presentation. Uh, really did cover, uh, a lot of information very clearly, nicely. And the report itself is so rich. Um, and I'm already mining it for, to use that data, um, you know, for various, uh, effort, community effort. And, um, so I, I guess I wanted to, and I am a big fan of data. I, um, super appreciate the robustness of survey methodology, all of the tools that, um, have access now, uh, this platform. And I'm really looking forward to continuing to utilize it and, you know, dig deeper as the adjusted kind of present. Um, so I guess, um, you know, and, and I, without, I'm not going to make a whole bunch of comments on, um, what I see in terms of how we're tracking with what. Participants in this survey suggest are important to them with respect to quality of life. Um, I, I do see some discrepancies around the, you know, kind of our homelessness response and, um, particular, and then around housing as well. And I, I understand we are, um, I mean, are the, the interest in addressing these challenges there. Um, and we're also hearing or seeing in this data that are in these data that aren't ranked. We're, we're not ranked very well in some of those areas. And, um, so I, I guess I, I'm, I'm wondering in particular around development questions. Um, is that, and, and I guess this is a question for, uh, for, uh, well, I guess I'll, I'll just put it out there. Um, I, it may be Elizabeth and Jade for, for sure. Are there tools available through this platform that can help us dig deeper into questions around land use and development? Um, and, and, you know, so I guess I just, if that's the case, I'd really like for the city to pursue that. Because I think that the data itself, I mean, it tells us something. But, um, one of the reasons that I tend to in my own work that I do as a researcher, try to incorporate additional more depth. Interviews and that diving deeper, because you don't get the why as much, right? I mean, we don't know if people are, are not thinking, uh, you know, police response, but why, what is that about, right? Um, people are saying, you know, the quality of development is, we're, we're lower compared to comparable communities. What is that about? Is it people thinking there's not enough or is it impactful quality of structures? So, you know, a lot of those, um, uh, lies I think are, are important for us to do in trying to get that dive. Um, and then I guess I, kind of following up on member Kalentari Johnson's point about how this might integrate into the work, uh, that around health and all policies. You know, it feels like, uh, really great opportunity. And, and I get that this, this data doesn't, um, correspond necessarily with of the other survey data we have. Um, however, it provides some really interesting, um, information that I think bears. Thinking about how we ask those questions, like are the recommendations, are our policies, is our policy agenda consistent with the findings of this survey? As survey respondents defining their views on the health of the. So, um, I'm, I, I do hope that the health health policy staff take that on and wrestle with how to best, uh, to improve. And our policy.
And just to briefly address, you know, some of the topics that you brought up, we absolutely do have, uh, multiple questions that have been asked in other communities. That have been vetted by survey experts that you can post to the platform. That is, um, I love, you know, you, um, something that we often say, the survey researchers, that a survey such as this one can tell you about what residents think, but not why they think it. And the Poco platform gives you the opportunity to do a little bit more of a qualitative approach. So, you know, you can ask these shorter form questions that you might only have a few questions if there's open. There's an opportunity for residents to write in a response and recuse in their own words, comment on a particular topic. So, um, that is a really, really nice, um, opportunity to engage with residents on that. And then, yes, and we have, um, entire surveys on law enforcement, as I mentioned, and on economic development. Um, but also individual questions relating to other more, um, specific topics like land use and development.
Thank you, council member Brown. Council member Cumming.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentations was really great. Uh, I don't unexpected it, you know, in terms of things come forward. And it was really great to see the survey that was conducted and all the, the valuable data that's there. I'm just kind of wondering, um, this is more out of curiosity, um, anything else. But I'm just wondering, um, if there's any way this information can be taken into consideration for revenue measure by the revenue subsidy. It seems like there's a lot of information about sentiments around business, workforce development, housing, safety, public safety. So I'm just wondering, you know, what thought there is or if there's an opportunity for us to, you know, with any polling that has been done. To, um, kind of juxtapose the data we're getting that both polling against what's coming out of this survey to just kind of see how two different types of surveys, um, what, what the community is.
Council member Cummings, I could, uh, I think the survey both, um, have strong alignment. Especially that revenue subsidy or in personal science measure, it has strong alignment where we can, like, there's. Uh, as I look at, um, what seems this survey really underscores, the community is telling us loud and clear. Uh, that they have turned around our lack of tasks around homelessness response. I think the community is telling us loud and clear that we have a need for more affordable housing. Really put capable solutions in place around housing affordability and availability. I think the community has also continued, uh, to share, um, across last, conducted that, um, there's a strong, um, interest in ensuring, um, a safe and healthy community. I think that applies downtown as well, also specifics of the miss survey as well as, I think all of those are. Planning to advertise, uh, if the council, uh, chooses. So I can say all of that, bringing this data back to the subcommittee, I think is a great idea. We can ensure that the information that the community is telling us really aligns with the current direction we're going. Uh, but based on the themes, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, those are all my comments. So, uh, just thanks again for that survey and for taking the time to take with us to see, discuss this.
Just one more plug, there is, the results are posted on our website in the community relations section of the city manager's apartment. Um, there's also, uh, the results are there in Tableau. So those of you who are true data nerds can go in there and play around and highlight different things that you want to do. And then if there are any follow-up questions, if you dig into the data, have questions, or you want to, or you want to initiate some sort of outreach. Um, by all means, let me know. I am here to investigate, um, things that are important to you. Um, we have five hundred people ready and waiting to take surveys. So, um, and then we'll be looking to build that, um, build that platform and bigger so that we can get more representative, um, information. So, um, thanks, thanks for the time and the ability to bring this to you tonight. Thanks for your enthusiasm over having some data in your.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth, and thank you Jade. Um, just all the categories that, uh, were there. I think the was labeled livability of Santa Cruz community livability and really, you know, having those different categories of safety and law enforcement. Mobility and transportation and, um, you know, some of the health and wellness and engagement. And, um, it's really a great start. I'm glad we'll be doing that, uh, on a regular basis. And, um, I'm excited to go to the website. And can you say one more time, Elizabeth, where that is on our cityofSantaCruz.com website?
Sure. If you go to the, the city manager's section on the website, there's a, but there's a link for community relation. It's just below that link there in community relation. Um, and we'll just, we'll update that with, um, additional surveys as they become available. And then as we do more engagement, we can create more of an engagement hub there, um, on all sorts of topics. Um, so we're just getting started.
Wonderful. Um, if that concludes council member questions, thank you so much, Jade Barocha for joining us. You, Elizabeth Smith.
Thank you all.
Get your time and your information. Thank you. We, um, have one more item on our agenda and, um, it's oral communication at six thirty. Um, since it is time certain, I will go ahead and, um, call for a break and we will return at nine PM. And continue with oral. Thank you so much. Welcome back. Thank you.
Many hours of muted.
Okay. Wait, ready?
Mayor, while we're waiting, if I could ask, um, I received a call during the break from somebody who was persistently trying to raise a hand to do the. So I, I would deliver that.
Um, um, Mayor, I'm not sure if, um, Charles was having issues, but I did see his hand clubbed a few times. But after he was able to comment and while you guys are already in.
Okay, uh, I'm going out to attendees. Is he there now?
I, his name on the, I had attendees on our.
Um, and, and so, you know, at this time, we've voted on the item. And so, um, I'm happy to have him, um, oh, there's his hand. Hand is up. And so before I go into communications, I'm happy to, um, open up that time for him to comment on that item. Before we go into oral communications or after. I think since oral communications is time certain, maybe we should do that first. And then I'm happy to go, um, and allow him that time to speak on item number four. Um, hopefully you can stay on. I do see your hand is working now. Thank you so much, council member Brown for bringing that to our attention. Um, okay, so oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not agenda. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if you want to comment during oral communications, now is time to call in and instructions are on your screen. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not listed on today's agenda. You are interested in addressing the council, raise your hand either by dialing star nine on your phone or selecting raise hand in the webinar controls on your computer. You will have three minutes. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. We request that you clearly and slowly state your name before making your comment so that we can accurately capture in the meeting minute, however it is not required. Please remember, this is a time for council to hear from the public. We are not able to engage in dialogue with member of the public. But when we are able, we will address the questions raised after oral communications has. So I will go out to our attendees and the first person with their hand raised for oral communications is, I am watching you.
I, I cannot state more strongly, the city's support for the mockeries of basic individual rights and the COVID mandates must now have a defined end date. There never was, and now it is CUC admitted after scores of studies, the cloth masks did nothing to stop COVID except promote fear and control. That unvaccinated people must still wear masks is irrational fear mongering totalitarian get the jab version assisted by legacy media government collusion promotion. Numerous studies show vaccine protection wanes and some indicated it actually goes negative, meaning eventually the vaccinated become more likely to contract COVID at some point. And serious side effects have been ignored. There is no rational, scientific, or moral reason to mandate coercive endless annual jabs with all the associated side effects, including death. Even Bill Gates now admits Omicron did more for immunity than the vax ever did with some estimated seventy-five percent. 75% Omicron immunity with only 10% of the Delta morbidities. That the mandates never did stop COVID, that those policies ignored the intense stratification of age health risks as well as the better natural immunity. The max suffering from lockdowns is still ignored. Zero risk children still suffer and must wear a mask because some teachers are Karen Powers. That Omicron is really just a bad flu like so many before. That effective outpatient treatments are still being denied and zero prioritized. That children are callously targeted to avoid Big Pharma's vaccine liability. All these points, when in moral greed, totalitarian powerless corruption, a revolving door, CDC, FDA, lapdog to Big Pharma, and a turning point where individual liberty and informed consent is either lost or saved. The unjustified $1,000 fines for walking on the beach or persecuting people without useless masks on and trailer shows will be on the wrong side of history. Every single person I saw in Safeway on Saturday was still wearing a useless cloth mask. And after that, always baseless fear mandate was partially lifted. Santa Cruz is loaded with the government and token spirit or media lied to, brainwashed, state worshiping, state dependent, cult-like collectivists, including communists, the DSA types, grievance-loving other blamers. So I don't expect much protest here against the state, stale state's destructive authoritarianisms. But my message is it's time to take all the mandate chains off people's lives with or without mass protest. A January 31st Monmouth University poll showed about 70% of Americans agree with this statement. Time we accept that COVID is here to stay and we just need to get on with our lives. On a different matter, I'd also like to mention government by opinion polls subvert a more proper, direct, detailed, rational dialogue between the people in government. Almost none of the questions in the National Community Survey were related to demographics. Intense overweighting for young people and the intense underweighting of older respondents is a poor and false assumption that everyone in the demographic thinks alike. Great, thanks.
Thank you for calling in for oral communication. I am going to go to caller ending in seven four zero seven. Go ahead, welcome.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, on my screen, I wasn't able to raise my hand, but I can see the members of the public how to comment, like the instructions are on my screen. So I'm actually using my phone.
Great.
My name is Elise. Thank you. My name is Elise Casby, and I'm very sorry I missed the agenda item on redistricting and the vote going to ballot. I think that would be tragic, but I'm calling in to talk about a concept that I've recently found after some research called inverted totalitarianism. Inverted totalitarianism. And the reason I want the public to know about this is because it has become so incredibly difficult to really have any voice within our so-called democracy. And I think Santa Cruz is a really good example of how our public voice has been all but extinguished through, you know, the sham and very, very deceitful dishonest recall. Where big money and lies that were utilized and smearing and, you know, in the Sentinel, which really was quite a disservice to the public. The way the Sentinel made it look like our old, our progressive council members who were unseated through the, the very dishonest and recall process. This district, redistricting is another one of these, let's do everything we can to create a very top-down authoritarian government structure. And so, of course, you're putting it to ballot. I didn't see the vote, but I imagine that you voted for it. You're putting it to ballot on June 7th, which is a time when the least number of people go to the polls. I think it's very important that the public start to understand the nature of the, you know, our, our true situation with the democracy. I recommend Sheldon Wolin, S H E L, I think it's D O N, Sheldon Wolin, W O L I N. I found out about Sheldon Wolin by reading Chris Hedges' an old article. And Sheldon Wolin is now deceased. But I think the type of inverted totalitarianism that we're facing is, it's, it's it's being, what's her promulgated from both the right and the left. This extreme corporate, big money, government environment where the community has so little voice. And I think Santa Cruz has, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise, for calling in for oral communications. Are there any other callers for oral communications? Before I move on to Stephen Bosworth. Attendees, I don't see any other hands up. So that will conclude oral. Thank you. Oh, we do have one more. We have Richard Lewis. Go ahead, Richard. Thank you. Hi there, unmute yourself. There's either a star, unmute yourself on your phone or unmute yourself.
I got it.
Hi there.
At 83, it's not easy, but I found you.
Yes, thank you.
Justin and Martine, you remember fifth grade? Those young people had something to say, you both attended that grade. Not going into any of it. I know that take on a block. That block with warming center is, we got dent there, we got health papers. So all I want, your vision, how we take county city, something that focuses on, as Martinez certainly knows, health doesn't start in the hospital, start in the community. So I'm on, listen, but this was the first time because I watched your meetings on the TV, but now I really get to see you. So I am definitely with good ideas. How about a youth mayor and a youth city council? How about using the resources of P and Cabrillo from your vision? So what, what best I can do is not create one more bigger or better united way or you name it. But Justin, I remember when I first met with Easter. Let's see what we can do. Now, the idea is you can't do in three minutes. But we can have a cup of coffee as Starbucks speaks to one cup at a time, one neighborhood at a time. And so I hope to learn more about how a mayor at age 25 would come to be with your leaders. I hope I spoke great. So, you know, I will follow up the conversation with an email to all of you. Over and out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Richard Lewis, for your oral communication. And if there are no further oral communication, let's see any other hands, I will close oral communications. And I will open it up for Stephen Bosworth for public comment. Item 14. Go ahead, Stephen. Unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Right, finally got through to you after all my attempts. Thank you very much for taking this late, coming into your meeting. I'd be very much pleased if you felt as though I'm fine to give me feedback. But if not, I hope thought and later outreach you're planning will help the process better. Okay. Head of number 14. The aim of the California Voting Rights Act.
May I interrupt? I am having a hard time hearing you. You moved away maybe from the device.
Yes, okay, okay, try again. The aim of the California Voting Rights Act is to treat each citizen equally, to remove as much vote dilution possible from our perspective. As you know, a deleted vote is one that has not helped to elect a favored candidate. For example, the 2018 and 2020 elections that produced the existing council diluted 50, sorry, 54% of all the votes cast by citizens. Yet neither the proposed seven district model nor the six district model with an elected mayor at large make likely that less half of all the citizens' votes cast will continue to be wasted, diluted since and by the California Voting Rights Act. In fact, this mixture of elections still seems so to violate the California Voting Rights Act. This makes it also vulnerable to challenge. Half of the votes wasted would not be so bad if there wasn't a better way available for elected council. But California's election code explicitly offers a better method in its chapter two. It is called faulty seat ranked choice voting. San Francisco, Berkeley, Oakland, and many cities elsewhere use ranked choice voting. This method invites each citizen to express their different judgment about the candidate. First choice, second, so forth. Consequently, about 88% of all the votes cast help to elect a winner they have favored. Not half of all the votes wasted, but only about 12. On a different issue, it is important to note that California's Attorney General has made it clear that the California Voting Rights Act does not require the adoption of districts. This, that claim has been made many times within this, in the previous zoom.
Thank you, Stephen, your time is up. The timer has rung at three minutes.
I understand that, but if there's no one else wanting to talk, I would appreciate it. You would want to talk maybe three or four minutes at all?
I, I have to, I have to end it at three minutes.
Okay, that's your rule.
Thank you so much for calling in. I'm glad you were able to get through. Okay. So with that, as our last item of public comment and oral communications is done. And I would like to say this meeting is adjourned and would also like to encourage anybody else who would like to email citycouncil@cityofSantaCruz.com. If there are any further comments, we'll receive them there. Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.